Morning.
Okay, do I even have an agenda?
Start with the start.
I don't know. I haven't even looked. Okay, so, good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 2025 Legislative Priorities Workshop of December 16th, 2024. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones and please rise for the invocation in place.
Oh, merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I just noticed Lisa's not here yet, but I know she was coming this morning. Do you know what their ETA is?
I hadn't heard from her.
Ralph? Where's Ralph? They're coming this morning, right?
I just texted.
Okay. All right. So, Madam Chair, could you please call the roll?
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District 4 Commissioner Jaeger. District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
And District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Here.
Thank you.
And at this moment, I'd like to welcome our legislative delegation here. Good morning.
Just the two important.
The workhorses. And at this time, I'd like to recognize you Senator Hooper for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's a, this is a good idea and it occurs in other counties and it's always nice for the legislators and the local county governance to get together. We don't often get a chance to exchange ideas enough and to really find out what's important to the citizens of those counties who have these type of meetings. So, I consider this a plus, a bonus for both the county of Pasco and the legislative delegation to understand, let's find out what the real priorities are and let's see if we can be successful. So, thank you for most of your commission, but a few of our delegation to be here this morning.
Thank you very much. And I was mentioning to Sean that for 32 years on this day, I've had an annual luncheon, Christmas luncheon for my girlfriends and this is the first time it's turned into a dinner because we have this meeting here this morning. So, it's important to all of us and we're really grateful that you guys are here. I understand Representative Holcomb has something to do with his reserve, I think, and that Representative Steele's on vacation out of the country, so we certainly.
Senator Goldie is also out of state. Senator Burgess, I do believe.
Oh, that's right, Senator Burgess. But we are expecting Representative Jaeger. So, and I'm going to wait just a little bit for them and turn to you and ask you, this is unscripted, but since while we're waiting on them, would you mind giving our delegation a little update on what we went through with the two storms, just some numbers and where we are?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Starkey. So, yeah, what a month the end of September through October was for the county. I see a lot of our directors and our team members that were here. We, it's no surprise here that we went through, we went through a lot. I would say that during the initial response of just between both Helene, which came through first, I think Helene actually sent a lot of warnings to citizens in terms of the dangers of storm surge and actually we had very few evacuees during that first storm, unfortunately. It really put our first responders into the thick of it. Between the two storms, actually over 1,200 water rescues we made during that period of time and actually you'll see some of our appropriations requests, I think will support some of that, some of that response. But during the second storm, when Milton came through barreling down as a strong Cat 4, even as a Cat 5 at one point in time, folks heeded the warnings and we had a tenfold increase in those folks that investigated and went through, went to our shelters. And so, having places to shelter folks as well was important. We were actually concerned even operating out of our emergency operations center at one point, that we were going to have to relocate inland, you know, and that's just how dangerous these storms were, plus just, and again, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the infrastructure things that I think we need to update as a result of this. Since I've been administrator, I can tell you this is, again, third go around in terms of a full-on activation with realistic threats. So, unfortunately, I think it's going to become the norm rather than just an outlier. But we continued after the storms to set up, I'll call it an encampment, but really an area for those that were displaced to live. We call it Pasco Hope. Actually, used an opportunity to get pallet homes installed as well as trailers from the state. The partnership with the state during the response was absolutely fantastic. We asked for things, we got things and folks really, really pulled together on that. So, I think we're probably, I don't know if Kathy's here, but I want to say we're probably about 60, 70% full on that. This is temporary, these are temporary housing for folks that literally lost housing and we're seeing more of that as we come through doing the recovery, which is the substantial damage issues because as you know FEMA, in order for us to maintain, you know, certain levels here, reimbursements and things, you got to kind of play by their rulebook a little bit. And while our federal delegation has been happy, I'm sorry, working with us to help move things along, we still, there's still sometimes the federal rules are tough. And so, it's coming to areas where, you know, we're having to make decisions, folks are having to make decisions on, you know, where do we go from our housing here and there. And so, we're seeing more and more folks kind of saying, you know what, I think we're leaving. So, they're coming to these, coming to these areas. But then again, we're also helping folks get through things and rebuild. On the debris front, I'm happy to say that we're probably three quarters of the way through. The state gave a, or sorry, the federal government gave a, and the state and the federal government gave us a, an extension, right? They had mentioned December. I think that deadline's gone all the way into February in terms of debris pickup. We've completed our first pass in the county. And so, we, again, Pasco County started ahead of everyone else.
We did. We started like two days after.
And we have continued to lead. So, out of 1.4 million cubic yards of debris, we're definitely over a million at this point and continue to clock in and pick up debris. We estimate probably about 50 to 60 million. And fortunately, we did receive our first check from the federal government in terms of helping our cash flow on that of about 24 million that actually made it into our accounts. And so, we'll continue, we'll continue to roll there. So, I don't know, Catherine, I've tap danced long enough.
Well, Brad's not coming. We just got word. But did you mention how many homes were substantially damaged that cannot rebuild?
JP's here. He's probably got the exact numbers. JP, 13?
Last count was 2,280 substantially damaged homes. That's over 300.
So, that's 2,200 that were what are considered substantially damaged, right? So, that is over 50% of the structure was inundated. So, usually, usually that's water, usually above three feet.
Some of those were team workers also.
Yes, yeah, and some of our, some of our own folks here within the county. And it amazed me at how well our employees pulled together to help our, to help our, you know, our own on that. But we have a lot of citizens, again, that are going to have to deal with this. And so, we're working hard and trying to help them figure out, you know, how to best, how to best navigate that, but it's tough. I think we had over 13,000 structures countywide that were damaged. And that's not just Helene. We had riverine flooding, as you know, well inland and that was kind of the double whammy. So, this is really a storm that has affected everyone.
And as of this morning, that number's gone down four.
Oh, the substantial damage?
Yes.
Well, and what the commissioner's referring to is, is we do a first, we did a first pass. So, with the help of the state, we had a contractor come in and they basically touched every single house. And by doing that, they have some formulas and it's not perfect, right? And they kind of estimate what the damage is supposed, what the damage should be of a house based on certain values of what a home and percentages and things like that. And then they base it off of what the property appraiser's website says the value of the home. They do that math. But if a homeowner, you know, kind of looks at that and says, well, hey now, I wasn't maybe as damaged this, or hey, my home is actually worth more, there's an avenue and there's a pathway for them to judge that, if you will, or at least bring more information to the table so our team members can make a more appropriate substantial damage assessment of that. So, that's part of the process. You know, we can't do it all right from the desktop, so sometimes, so folks know their properties best.
And one of the interesting things that we learned is every county and every municipality has different ordinance as far as the cumulative repair costs.
Yes.
And we are quite, I think, quite fair. I mean, we're one year cumulative.
Yeah, and what the commissioner's referring to is, is that if you live in a home, there's, basically if you're in a flood zone, you're not elevated, for example. Let's just say that you're not, it doesn't qualify like that. If you do over 49% worth of remodeling or there's other things, that tracks. And so, if you come in and you get storm damaged, whatever is accumulated in the past 365 days counts against you, I guess, if you will. There's other places that run that cumulative average for three years, for example.
Newport Ritchie is five years. You know, and I guess there's good and bad to that. You know, in one-year cumulative, you can keep, you kind of can keep repairing your house much more than someone who's five-year cumulative. And so, then your, the federal bill stays high, I guess, because you're not getting people out of the floodways, but.
But it bounds. It jumps into your.
Community rating system.
Your CRs. That's one of the things they look at is your ordinance and how many years.
Yeah. So, we're five or four.
Right, we're five. I think from paperwork, we can go to a four. And that's kind of a sweet spot, I think, for us right now. It kind of gives us the right amount of discounts for our citizens without having to overly be burdensome in terms of what the construction should look like.
I'm curious, do you know what Date City, does anyone here know what Date City or Zephyr Hills is as far as their CRs?
I do not know offhand.
Yeah, I don't know. We know Newport Ritchie is five years, so it caught a lot of people who had done repairs from the last storm and they weren't able to rebuild. They are not able to rebuild. And the reason why we have to be very strict on this is because we don't want to lose the ability to participate in the FEMA flood insurance plan. If we did, if we did lose it, like Lee County and City of Tarpon Springs did, we would have to pay for all that debris pickup ourselves.
Mike, I think we need to, I'm not completely sold on that statement. I think we need to fully understand what the cost is to our property owners to be in that program. It might be worth it for the county, but it may not necessarily be advantageous for the property owner in that program. And that's something that I want to vet and understand fully to make sure that that program is of overall benefit to not just this county, but more importantly, to the side of the property owners of Pasco County.
100%. And as part of, you know, as we get into February and we're going to do a comprehensive stormwater and flooding workshop, I think a refresher on that for the board and the public to understand why we do the things that we do and what the advantages of that are. It's beyond flood insurance. There are other elements to consider, but I think it's a fair thing that we should always look at those things and make sure the juice is worth the squeeze, right?
Yeah, that's why we didn't want to go down below a five or a four, whatever.
You know, I've seen the number, how great it was at the point, but you look at the number, how they've raised the rates, raised the rates, what do you really save? And when I look at the money they've blown on things we could have done better, I mean, I don't want to take a trailer and raise it up 13 feet. It would be unsafe to live there. If you get a windstorm coming in and you're living up there and that roof can come off like we've seen, like Ian, storms get ripped everywhere on low level. So, that's the answer? I don't think so. I think if you took every one of those trailers, let's say, on our areas and raised, were able to raise them up five feet, you would have probably zero damage across the whole county. FEMA would have saved a whole bunch of money, but they don't let you do that. So, I will tell you, I blame them going to DC and fight what they're doing because they're not treating the people right. And you got people that can't afford to raise up. And think about it, you raise a trailer up 15, 13 feet, you gonna put an elevator there too? I mean, it doesn't make sense to what they're doing. They're hurting themselves, hurting our people, and I want people to stay in their homes. I want to try to work with them as best we can. JP, by the way, your team up there is doing phenomenal.
Yeah.
The four people I mentioned today, they listened to them, they went through. The title based in numbers, we had one lady, four feet elevated up, they wrote her at substantially damaged, all she had was outside electrical damage. So, believe me, this whole program needs to get looked at and I appreciate you saying it too.
All right, so we will workshop that.
Yes, ma'am.
We did just a little bit when we were looking at the CRs system, but not enough. So, thanks for bringing that up. All right, and let me recognize that Commissioner Jaeger is here. And we're sorry, Brad's not making it.
He had to get into the doctor this morning.
Okay. Yeah, my daughter came down with COVID yesterday. I believe that's still going around. All right, so. That's where I'm away from me. She doesn't live with me. She's in St. Pete.
Sit up there and you're ready. One of those you need to know things.
All right, now I'll turn it to you, Carvalho, to.
Thank you, ma'am.
To introduce Ralph and get the show.
Yes, so we'll get the show on the road. So, I'm going to have Ralph here talking just a second, but again, I would like to thank members of the delegation and the board for being here as well as members of the public. We have before you really two parts to this exercise. One, our policy proposals. The others are appropriations. And this is grassroots effort, right? Starting from our, from our team members here, many of which are in the audience here, able to speak if there are questions on any of these items. But also, we have met twice with our board, once at a workshop and once at a regular session, to really narrow it down and focus on specific policy proposals that we think will benefit the citizens of Pasco County as well as appropriations that we think will help leverage tax dollars in a lot of ways. So, Ralph, I'm going to let you just kind of walk us through, starting with the policy proposals. And again, this is meant to be a conversation, so Senator Hooper, Representative Magg, if you have questions about what it is, we certainly can discuss it. And we have, like I said, we have our subject matter experts here to provide any more color to it that we could. So, Ralph?
Thank you, sir. Ralph Lehrer, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. Again, thank you all for being here. I do want to recognize Jonathan Till and Matthew Lawson with Senator Burgess's office and Jayden Cuso with Representative Steele's offices here. So, we appreciate them being here.
His chase is coming.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm here, sorry.
We can bring him to the table.
I'm here. I'm representing.
Thank you.
We can move you up there.
Do you guys want to sit next to Catherine?
My daughter lives in St. Pete. She's not with me.
Cheap seat sale over here.
I know. She did have a fun time this weekend and I'm sure her friends aren't so happy.
That's okay. This is Commissioner Waitman, Commissioner Oakley.
She's got five days to rent from my family.
Okay. Mark Carvalho, county anchor. Jeff County Attorney. Commissioner Starkey, Commissioner Mariano, and you know, right back.
I think everything's rearranged. Everybody got a chair? So, as Mr. Carvalho said, we broke it down and we have eight policies that we wanted to put on as a priority. One of those, the first one is we're requesting a local bill. This is dealing with our county inmate medical costs and I'm going to have Stacy Jenkins come up and she heads our correction facility here in Pasco. facility here in Pasco County, kind of explain the situation, uh, and then I'll give you a little bit of history, uh, about this as well.
Good morning. Stacy Jenkins, Chief of Corrections. Um, you know, we have an inmate population of about seventeen hundred inmates. And currently, we're paying up to two-point-two-five million dollars annually for outside medical costs. So we rely on our vendor to negotiate those hospitalization costs with, um, local providers. Typically, they're getting a cost of about a hundred and thirty percent Medicare rate. Um, we're asking for a local bill that will cap those rates at a hundred and ten percent, which is similar to the Department of Corrections, uh, which is, um, that is statutorily required for DOC. So we're looking for a local bill currently, but ultimately, we think this would benefit multiple sheriff's office and local jails to not relying on their vendors to negotiate rates for them.
Ralph, can you give a little history of some of the other counties that have done local bills?
So I was just about to say, so one other county last year had the same issue, and they ran a local bill. Uh, St. Lucie County, it did pass. No questions were asked, uh, on that one as far as any problem. But again, this gets us to the same, uh, even plainfield with the state. The state corrections has that gap. So if, if it's to protect ourselves, if we don't have a contract in place, you know, we can ensure our taxpayers won't have to pay more than that Medicaid rate. So I will be seeking a sponsor, uh, for that local bill. As we know, local bills are only run, uh, on the House side. Uh, so we'll just need a House sponsor, we'll not need a Senate sponsor. Um, for purposes of just explaining that to, uh, the public, House runs all the local bills. Once they pass out of the chamber, they go over to the Senate, and the Senate, uh, in session takes them up as a consent calendar, unless there are any questions, and then those bills are pulled off, uh, if there are any questions. So they'll, they'll pass out altogether on the Senate side. Just a point of reference, House does local bills, Senate does claims bills. So Senate gets the task of carrying those bills, uh, for the public. And confirmations, yes, sir.
Before we move on, Ralph, actually, I just, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask the chief one question on that. Chief, this is, we're, we're talking inmate healthcare costs, right? So these are folks that are in, in our facility. There was an incident on Friday where a suspect was, was shot three times by Pasco County Sheriff's Office. Uh, I assume that he is under our charge now, and that those medical bills would fall to the taxpayers of Pasco County?
They would. Um, as soon as that individual is arrested, Patrol will notify us, and we will take custody of, of that individual at the hospital. So once we take custody of the individual at hospital, that's when our fees start. We should wait till they're getting released from the hospital.
I, I just, I just, I just wanted to...
They just said some jurisdictions do that. I mean, seriously, what are we thinking here? Can't we wait? Let's make a, let's make a judgment call.
It would be the sheriff's cost if it's not our cost, so I think you're gonna end up...
Same place I knew.
Well...
A, you're obligated to provide medical treatment for every inmate. You don't have a choice. B, the, uh, the Department of Corrections, uh, just last week came forward. They have a five-year contract with their medical care provider, uh, who before the contract was a year old, asked for additional funding. This year, they're asking for an additional seventeen million dollars. And already, in year three, they're projecting a shortfall of thirty million dollars, and we may be looking for a new contractor, uh, because they did obviously a low-ball bid and thought they could just adjust on the fly. Um, and, and the worst news for you, Matt, and Chief, is the local bill deadline is December the eighth.
Oh, so none of these will...
That's the only local bill that'll be had.
Uh, Representative Maggert has one or two potentials that he's filed already. The, the Pasco delegation rules, unless there are rules as far as to have a deadline, we have to, we have to post them on the website.
I already did that, and I also got it in the paper. So I got that deadline. That's not the state deadline for the legislature. So we're still good on, on getting a sponsor on that. But the, he's, he's talking about for a delegation meeting on the seventh. Uh, they are on the website. We have two other local bills on the website as well.
You can't beat the deadline for this one. You don't have a sponsor, so December eighth is passed.
Oh, you mean I have to have a sponsor for the delegation meeting too? All right. All right.
Well, um, for discussion, uh, something I've been working on, on the national level. And, um, this is a priority of NACO. So, so we're talking about Medicare reimbursement here, but that doesn't mean we're billing Medicare. This is straight, that's just the rate, right? That's straight right out of our bank account. When someone gets arrested, um, and is held in our jail, they lose their Medicare benefits. Um, not, not in every state now. We've been able to change it so that states who have, um, suspend, have a suspended Medicare program can get reimbursed. We have a termination Medicare program here in the state. So I don't know what that means. Um, but when I showed this to Senator Rubio, it, it came from the Social Security Act of nineteen sixty-something. And, um, he said that he could see right away that it was a mistake in the language that he felt that was written in the, in, um, the act. Um, but there's no reason why if these, if some of these people were on Medicare or Medicaid, that it shouldn't be continuing, and that we can bill the feds and not bill the county. So something that we focused on at the national level. And I don't know what it means to take Florida from a suspend, uh, a termination to a suspension. Um, but...
That sounds like it should be a general bill that impacts the entire state once that covered this shortfall, not a local one.
Does that mean that, does that mean the state would have to cover the shortfall? Or, or the...
No, it would at least allow the language to change for, I think the state's is a hundred and ten percent of Medicaid rates on Medicare.
No, I, I'm, I'm talking about even bigger than that is if we, if we work towards, um, changing the federal language where inmates shouldn't get their healthcare benefits terminated until they're found guilty or something. This is while they're just being held in jail. And their families lose it. If, if they were the, the head of household, and their family has coverage underneath them, the whole family loses their healthcare benefits.
Congress is so good at, at identifying these issues and reacting to them.
No, no, we've been at it for like five years. We, we moved to that at least a suspended state can, can participate. I don't know what the big holdup is.
I would say that every county in this state is experiencing the same problem, their medical costs for their inmates.
So is this something that you think you might do for the whole state, and then it's not a local bill?
I, I, I'm still shocked to find that St. Lucie pulled it off as a local bill, uh, because it kind of, if, if you were, if you were successful in getting us a local bill, the remaining sixty-five counties would have local bills, asking for the same relief.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
So do you think we can ask the delegation to make this just a statewide bill? Because it did for one, you should be able to do it for all of them, especially with this...
And you do it for your own, why, why would you not do it for the counties? What's the, what would be the thinking?
Any member of the legislature can file a general bill, uh, or whatever. There's a, you have to have a sponsor above you.
Well, so maybe it changes number one and two.
A general.
If that deadline is ours, you can still file a general bill up until the opening date.
Randy, do you have any thoughts on, on that?
No, not really from the House. I mean, we're still organizing, and, um, they've cut back on, sort of, they've weakened their share of things, wanting to get the budget up. I want to stay on the House side against the Senate, but the House thoughts aren't going forward on the budget side. Uh, but probably until the end of this week, uh, we'll be officially organized committees and everything, and then we'll have more ideas. So I really don't have a lot to say about that, because I, I don't know myself.
Yeah.
Other than I have two locals. I think that's all I have.
But it seems like it would help the local county governments...
I think this is a statewide issue.
Yeah, keep more money to run their jails, so...
The, the, the House has the restriction of the, the number of general bills you can file. Um, the Senate's unlimited. Uh, my restriction is, but my assignment, I probably don't do this this year. Um, so you're down to like, and it doesn't have to be a member of this delegation. It could be anybody in the legislature.
That's correct. And, and to add on to that, this is an issue that, uh, was picked up by the Florida Association of Counties. Uh, they had some other issues dealing with inmate healthcare, uh, as part of their policy. So since it was passed by the FAC, uh, they can work on helping us get a, a local, um, or a, a bill sponsor for that.
They worked with them to see if they were interested in identifying two sponsors.
Thank you. Uh, before we go any further, I gotta do a little housekeeping for the clerk. Uh, Chair, I'm gonna start with you. If you'll just state your name, and we'll go around the room, so the clerk has that. Uh, on there, everyone state their name, please.
Commissioner Catherine Starkey.
Jeff Stein Snyder.
Mike Carvalho.
Ed Hoover.
Jonathan Till.
Matthew Lawson.
Ron Oakley.
Lucy Jaeger.
Jayden Cuso.
Seth Waitman.
Chase Valhannon.
Randy Maggert.
Jack Barriello.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on 911 fees.
So the next issue is another FAC proposal. Uh, but it, it was also a concern for us. Uh, Pinellas County actually came to us and said, um, "Do you have a, have a, a issue with this? Are you all losing money?" And we said, "Yes, we're, we have a shortfall, and we're, we're pulling from our general funds," but it's the 911 fees. So currently, uh, the state collects 911 fees, forty cents per line. Uh, and we're knowing, uh, long are able to support the level of expenses to maintain 911 throughout the state. Counties must use local tax dollars out of our general funds to support 911 expenses, reducing funds available for other county programs. From FY nineteen, for year nineteen to twenty-twenty-three, Pasco has incurred twenty-four million, five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars in 911 fee eligible expenditures. Of that, seven million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven, or thirty-two point three, was funded from our general funds, uh, reducing funds available for local programs. So what we're trying to do, it used to be at fifty cents. They moved it down to forty cents, probably ten years ago. And, uh, we're trying to get it back up to fifty cents. In reality, uh, that would at least get us back, you know, where we can start. And then, uh, if they attach it to cost of living every year to, to move up, that might be a possibility. But in reality, we're probably about a dollar twenty, if I'm not mistaken on that. Yeah, a dollar twenty, uh, is the shortfall that we have that would not require us to take out of, uh, our general revenue to cover those 911 costs. Again, this is a priority for the FAC, uh, so they are working on getting a sponsor for that bill.
Is that, is that charged to every hard line plus every cellular line?
Correct. That is correct.
Every phone.
Everybody is, yes.
And what's interesting is if you, um, have a phone number from another state, the, that state gets those taxes.
Yes.
Is there anything you can do about that?
You're dealing with, you're good friends with Congress.
So, so people who have moved here, you know, um, and are using our 911, they, they don't pay into the system. So, um, it's another little quirky thing about that.
Ms. Chair?
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can work, and I think we should work in the future to promote that for all those people that have moved down here. You can keep your same number, but if you hire a local cell, cellphone operator, that can be switched over.
It'd be easy to change it to wherever your bill is received. Irregardless of your number, if your billing statement comes to a foreign address, you should pay.
Yeah, it's kind of a...
Is that common sense, Chris, coming to think of it?
Common, yes, common sense.
Our next policy issue, another FAC proposal. Um, this is another one where the state has the ability, um, to, uh, uh, have a, um, the, the local tax revenues increase with cost of living on that. Uh, so I want to have our county engineer, Nick Uren, come up here and explain a little bit of what we're seeking. It's just a parody, uh, across the board, uh, with the state, um, as we try to cover the cost of increases for construction for transportation.
Good morning. Nick Uren, County Engineer for Pasco County. Pleasure to meet you.
We've all been saying his last name wrong.
Wait, I, I've been saying it wrong for twenty, yeah, the whole time that my wife and I have been married, so.
Uren.
Yeah, I, I say along U, Uren. Uh, but anyway, it's nice to meet you. Uh, short story of this is there, there's a escalation clause written into statute that allows for the local taxes plus the SKEZ taxes to increase over time based on the Consumer Price Index. But local taxes are a fixed rate per gallon, so only the SKEZ tax gets the benefit of the increase in the Consumer Price Index over time. So what we're suggesting with this proposal is that both the local taxes, the one through twelve cent local option fuel taxes that county commissioners have the ability to levy, are also able to be increased based on the increases in the Consumer Price Index over time. And that basically allows us to, uh, maintain our purchasing power to construct the infrastructure necessary to produce a thriving, a transportation network to support a thriving community.
What is your rate now for gas?
Pasco's at twelve cents. We, we have chosen to levy all twelve local option gas tax cents.
You're at the cap.
We are at the cap. That's correct. And we use that revenue as, for a combination of maintenance. We, we designate seven cents of the twelve toward the maintenance of our transportation system that's already existing, and five cents of that twelve goes toward the expansion of that system to accommodate growth and influx of new residence businesses, et cetera. Uh, but over time, that, just like the federal tax rate is capped at eighteen point three cents per gallon, the, the purchasing power of that revenue stream has substantially diminished since its inception. And we're just looking for ways to, um, keep pace with the, the growth and the challenge of our system.
Has the adopted road paving, uh, process, is that part of the twelve cents?
It is not. The MSTU that we established is a local ad valorem tax that would be a designated revenue stream for the maintenance of our transportation system as well. Again, looking at ways to supplement the failing revenue stream of, of the local option gas tax and keeping pace with our needs.
What about the penny for Pasco? Is that good?
So that, that one, Penny for Pasco sales tax was reestablished for a new fifteen-year period, beginning in two weeks. Um, yeah, yeah. So our, our third generation of Penny for Pasco is going to begin January first of twenty-five, and it's going to run through the end of calendar year twenty thirty-nine. So a full fifteen-year period. Um, going from memory, the allocation of our Penny for Pasco revenue, forty-five percent of that total revenue received goes to the county government, and of that revenue, forty percent is diverted to transportation, to the improvement of our transportation system generally, primarily focused on multimodal transportation. How are we building connected pathways and, um, facilities for bicycle and pedestrian users in Pasco County? But we do have the ability to also use that revenue to install traffic signals, to regulate and improve safety at intersections, and, uh, minor capacity of projects. But it's not a designated stream large enough to fund some of our significant capacity investments needed.
Impact fees for all the developments occurring.
Oh, yeah. Yes. We have, and we have mobility fees.
Mobility, we call them mobility fees.
We're the first one in the state to have.
Good, we're just gonna be a chunk of change, but...
It's, and it's not enough. You hear all the time, people complaining about crowded roads, so...
Yeah, we have a, a multimodal mobility fee that we assess as well, and it looks at the need to construct capacity on our road network, as well as the bike ped component, the right-of-way component. Uh, transit is a component of our mobility fee, as well as the construction of roads on the strategic intermodal system, or parallel facilities to, to support those. So we look at things like the extension of Rangeland Boulevard as a reliever to State Road Fifty-four, as a use of, uh, mobility fees paid by developers to, uh, improve the quality of service on the, on the state road network as a parallel sys facility.
You know, some of the big expenses that we've had in transportation that come to mind for me is, of course, Ridge Road. Who remembers, who knows the total bill for Ridge Road? Anyone here know that?
It's a nine-figure number.
Then we had, we, we ourselves, pretty much, we got, I think we got some help from you, um, did the overpass, uh, on seventy-five. Normally, that's... Normally, that's picked up by someone else, not the local county, when you're building an overpass, you know, exchange, and, and interchange. I think that's the right word, interchange. Does anyone know the number that we paid on that?
It's close to 20.
At least, yeah.
Maybe at least 20.
I just remember Secretary Prasad saying, why are you guys paying for that yourself, you know?
I have a meeting a week after Christmas with Secretary, uh, Perdido, so.
Oh, nice.
Probably quarter of us, fuel tax indexing. Is FAC making, is that a priority?
Yes, these are, these are big ones, yeah. Of course, we have 5441 looming, uh, ahead of us, which is another big one. Oh my goodness.
So the next issue came to us from our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we have, uh, that set up in the county. The commissioners set that up, uh, and this deals with pedestrians' safety driver requirements. So current law requires cars to slow down and yield to pedestrian right-of-way. Again, yield, uh, if there's no one there, what they have seen and, and say if we were to change the law to require cars to actually stop, um, at a crossing for, uh, the pedestrians. It could, you know, lower a lot of accidents with bicycles and, and pedestrians, if that, just that tweak in the law were to occur.
While pushing strollers.
Do I do a lot of county ordinance? Mr. Attorney.
You've regulated the field in general law, and so, and we'd be changing state law by local ordinance, so it probably has some problems. I'm not prepared to say you couldn't, but.
Is that, is that just an opinion?
That's just an opinion.
So we can do it.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The, the one fear I have with this one here, on a two-lane road, it's easier to do, but if you've got like a six-lane, like Highway 19, et cetera, and you expect someone on the third lane over to see someone coming over, and you get someone to slam on their brakes coming through. I've been hit three times in the rear, stopped on these busy roads, you're gonna create more accidents than we've ever had before as well, so. You can, you can weigh this one through as far as I'm concerned.
Now, you're rear-ended.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, this is Brian.
Roadway. Uh, my name's Brian Michaels, I'm, uh, Chair of the B-PAC Committee for Pasco County.
Explain what that is, if they don't know.
Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So a three-lane road would normally probably have a traffic light. Current state law requires vehicles to stop and remain stopped for a pedestrian that's in that, uh, section of roadway until they're on the other half of the roadway. So Section A deals with that, that was changed in 2008. Section B deals with crosswalks that have a sign that says you must stop for pedestrians in a crosswalk. Every other crosswalk in the state of Florida, it is yield. Yield means you either slow down, or maybe stop. So it would be a lot easier for law enforcement, because yield, it's an interpretation of law enforcement to say that you slowed down for a crosswalk. There is no interpretation of stop. Now, every school in the state of Florida has crossing guards. When they go out with their, uh, orange vests, they have a sign that says, "Stop." They don't have a sign that says, "Yield," it says, "Stop." What happens at school crossings or playgrounds that don't have a crossing guard there 24/7? Those, uh, those children, or, uh, seniors, or anybody on a bike that has to go through a crosswalk, they have to, uh, rely on the vehicle to yield to a pedestrian. So, um, it's much easier if it's a stop. It follows Sections, uh, uh, 7A and B in our current law. And, um, the, the closest state that has a similar law is the state of Georgia. It was changed in 1995. And it's, it's, it just follows, it's logical.
You know, I always thought that you had to stop when someone was in the crosswalk, I thought that was our law already.
No, it's yield, if you, if you look at, if you look at it, at, uh, if you look at the law, it's, it says that you was, you yield and like possibly stop for a pedestrian. So it, and again, it'll, it's, I can't tell you how many lives it's gonna save, but I can guarantee you it will prevent, uh, and save lives in the state of Florida. The state of Florida also has one of the worst track records for bicycle and pedestrian fatalities.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So this is a FAC-supported.
So the next one, I'm gonna give a, kind of out here that we will tread lightly, as we all know, Live Local, uh, when it first passed, we worked with a sponsor, President Pasadomo, uh, to address, uh, some of our concerns. We did, uh, we were successful, uh, in how we did on the, uh, tax exemption. But we were not successful on the land use issue, and so we still have concerns with this, uh, as we move forward. This may not be the, uh, the year, but we do want to keep it on your radar, so you know what we are dealing with. But the commissioners felt important that we do make this one of our policies. So I'm, I'm gonna have, uh, our county attorney, David Goldstein, who's the expert on Live Local, just to come up and explain the, the land use issue that we are trying to see.
Expert in the state on Live Local.
Thank you, Ralph, and, and I wanted to thank the delegation members for what, the support we got last year on the tax side. We just didn't quite get there, cross the finish line on the land use side. I think you all know that we have a lot of commercial industrial property in Pasco County that's still at risk of being converted to apartments, basically. And for Pasco County, we have a strong emphasis on job creation. We value our commercial sites, we value our industrial sites, we want to make sure that we're not continuing to just be a bedroom community to Hillsborough Pinellas, we want to be able to, be able to have folks work local, not just live local, but work local. And so, for us, protecting those commercial industrial sites is a priority. You know, every time we get a new commercial or industrial rezoning in Pasco County, we make them, need to restrict their property. Mr. Waitman's very familiar with this issue, um, so that they don't invoke Live Local. So it's still a major issue for us on land use side. I will tell you that we did have some conversations with the Senate President's Office towards the end of the session. When we got the tax relief, they asked us, will this shut up Pasco? And my answer was, um, not quite, um, because we're still not there on the land use side. So, Senate President's Office did have some dialogue with us. There was some discussion about maybe limiting it to redevelopment sites. You know, we have, we have some redevelopment sites, like the Gulfview Square Mall, where we've allowed some of that to convert to, to multifamily. And it makes sense in certain locations, but I think you all know, you know, Pasco EDC has a ready sites program where we have over 3,000 acres of industrial that we're trying to preserve for employment. And that becomes very difficult when you have Live Local comes in and says, that can all be converted to residential. So, we still need some relief on that issue, and any support we can get from the delegation would be appreciated. It sounds like Commissioner Waitman wants to weigh in.
Commissioner Mariana.
Thank you. Yes, Senator Hooper, just, thanks David for the recap there. Pasco is leading the state with the number of commercially zoned properties. Pasco's, I think, we're number one with those zoning of all the counties. And, it's important to remember as we go through the land use side of this bill, we talked about the overpass road interchange. We still have a corner of that road where taxpayers, with 65 million invested in this overpass, that the Live Local bill is still being dangled over at us as that, those folks who have that important corner are trying to, uh, come up with, uh, a project that this board may see as a benefit to the county. But, with that said, it comes with a residential, it's highly likely it'll come with a residential component to it, which is completely against what that zoning was set for. So Live Local is still being used as a leverage point, at least with this government. And, uh, we just don't want to see that used and diminish the taxpayer investment on such critical job-creating sites that pass boards have voted on and made, made, you know, available for, for good commerce, so. Just something that we deal with, two meetings a month, and it's just, it's important to us that we save our, save our jobs.
Commissioner Mariana.
Thank you. You know, when I first ran for office 20 years ago, my number one platform was economic development, we're a big commuter county. I will tell you, as much as I'm thrilled that we're the number one commercially producing county for job jobs, we are still a big bedroom community for the people that have to commute. And what that does, it affects Pinellas, it affects Hillsborough, all over the place. So the more jobs we can create here, the better. I will say this board's been phenomenal, and our citizens have been phenomenal, backing our economic development plans. The first penny didn't have anything with economic development, but the last two do. And to hire like a guy like Bill Cronin to come forward and put his team together to bring great companies like Rayline Plastics, we just got, Gary Line Plastics we just brought in. They were expecting, they didn't know if they could build the jobs in, they were expecting 300 jobs over like four years. In less than nine months, they filled 600 jobs. I mean, you know, with, with all we do with the M-SKUs, et cetera, we want to keep on focusing this stuff, but we don't want the, the, these properties to be able to come in and kill us. And frankly, every single commercial loan we get coming in, does all changes change with it? We, we did just one the other day for our overlay policy, uh, where they can't switch it over. But we shouldn't have to do that battle, we shouldn't have to control locally. So somehow we just get that bill to give the local the control, um, if you need to base on something about commuter rates, whatever, so be it. But, something to do that if we've done these things and put things into place, help us create the jobs, because it's not only better for us, it's better for Florida.
David, when you did your analysis, it, you found that it really benefited four counties in the, in the state, do you remember?
Because they, what they said was affordable, they said that 120% of the average median income. And I think we discovered last year that there's really only Miami-Dade, Broward, and Monroe are the only counties in the state that even have a deficit, major deficit of housing in that income range. So, for Pasco, 120% of AMI is just market-rate apartments. So, what we're finding is Live Local is basically just a subsidy for market-rate apartments, at least in Pasco.
They, they kind of lumped Tampa Bay inclusive, and you were wrapped up in that number. I can't speak for the House, the representative is closer to being, assuming you'll be part of that leadership team. I know on my side, I, I think the Senate's gonna have that discussion, and, and even though President Pasadomo is still in the, the chamber for two more years, she's not the president, so, um, it's been talked about a little bit. I think she is receptive to, the legislatures, we, we have a great policy, we never have time to do it right, but we always have time to do it over. And this may be the year we get to do it over and, uh, fix our, we call it a glitch bill. To take that into consideration, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that discussion will occur early in session, if not in committee week.
Excellent. I don't know if we have anyone here from community development, but, uh, you know, we did a study. We hired, the, the Pasco Housing Authority hired University of South Florida to do a, a housing analysis for Pasco County. And it showed we had plenty at 80 to 120 AMI, and plenty in the pipe works, where our big deficit is at 60 and under. And, um, certainly, anything that the state can do to help, and we're not the only county in that situation, and hurricanes can make, has made that much worse for a lot of people, any help on the 60 and below.
What is the AMI?
Uh, David, you know what, the, uh.
Current AMI is in Pasco? I actually don't.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think Kathy Pearson's on line, Kathy, do you know by chance?
No, I don't, uh, but David, uh, you don't have to have the report handy, we could look that up.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get it sent to you.
Before we leave.
And it, and it changes, you know, it's for, for a family of two, it's this, for a family of four, it's that. We are proud that, uh, in the next few weeks, I think we, I think one just closed, Dominion, just closed on a 60. They're gonna be building a 60 AMI, 200, about 260-bed unit or apartment unit out by Anklup High School. It was on surplus school property, and they got all their funding, so I think they're ready to go. There's also an adult, um, age-restricted one that the City of Newport Ritchie is doing, that we partnered with, behind the Southgate Publix. So, I'm sure those will be built the minute the doors are open there, but the, the need is, is greater than the supply that we have. So it's not that we're against that kind of housing at all.
We got the message that if Pasco is lumped into a, a group of counties that may have a different scenario than, than we do, and we understand that.
I do think that adding, changing that term out redevelopment really cleans it up a lot, yeah.
Okay, then, our next issue, also part of the FAC agenda. You'll remember back in '21, the law was changed, but before 2021, code enforcement complaints could be made by residents anonymously. Now it requires them to put their name in. We tried to go around that, uh, when the bill was created, and allow the residents to call their county commissioner, so they could put that in. We, we did that, uh, we have been doing that, uh, a lot, but just not enough manpower to go around the county. So it would be good if we can get that back in and repeal that law. You'll remember, this is Snitches Get Stitches law that passed in '21.
That is the truth.
We actually had a resident, you had a resident, I think, this is something near and dear to you, but we had a resident that was attacked.
Yes, um, he had a house that had drug dealing and other things going on next to him, and called it in, and they beat him up, and he got, his, his face was all cut up, and was in the hospital, and stitches all over his face. So when we brought this up at FAC, every county came forward with horror stories of, of, uh, what's going on when, when, um, you make some of these calls, and, and the, the person comes in and does something to their property, or to them physically. I do think there, there needs to be some kind of guardrails, because I know, I think the reason it switched when we had a legislator from South Florida was that some, some people use it, um, as a way to antagonize a neighbor or something. So, you know, maybe so many calls on one address, um, I'm sure code enforcement could, or someone could come up with the right guardrails, but there does need to be guardrails, but we, we have a, a lot of citizens who are now afraid to call in, and, um, it's really impacted a lot of neighborhoods across the state.
Like a lot of things that happen in legislature, actions that appear in Miami-Dade, Broward County, Palm Beach County, affect all of us statewide, because we built the wrong wall in the wrong part of the United States, and, um, should be, should be that part.
We need South Florida laws and the rest of the same Florida.
I would be shocked if we changed it back to anonymous, but guardrails, maybe are a consideration. And I'm assuming FAC is looking for some sponsor.
One of the guardrails they talked about is keeping it for 12 months, and then releasing it 12 months.
Ralph Shumpert's gonna need a mic.
Oh yeah.
So the, the association has also talked about proposing a guardrail to keep it private for 12 months and then releasing it. One, you know that you, uh, made that call, that that information would be available in 12 months, so that could be a guardrail they could consider.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
You know, something that may work is to allow an HOA to put a complaint, and that's what we used to do a lot, and that worked very well. Because now it doesn't tie even a person, but it knows a group that's going out there. Sometimes we don't have HOAs, but we have other citizen groups that are, that are official, official, in, in like Crime Watch, et cetera, they can see it as well. But any, anything to get it reported where someone doesn't get that retribution, and I've got a couple where people got beat up really bad.
Yes, it's not okay.
And it just, it's like putting neighbor against neighbor, it just doesn't build good relations anyway. But, the, the bottom line is, if the police can take an anonymous complaint, why can't we have code enforcement do the same thing?
I, I'm telling you, unanimous support from all the counties that, uh.
Commissioner, when you say like an HOA would put the complaint, so if somebody looked it up, they would just see HOA.
HOA, exactly, yeah.
But, you know, for me, a lot of my district in Holiday, there, there are no H2As. And we're working so hard to clean that up, and this has been a real step backwards for those kind of neighborhoods.
But that's why I say a crime watch group, like Nancy Benitez, Gulf Island's very organized, they meet once a month. They, they could do it as well the same way.
And there's areas in every county, including this one, where code enforcement is ongoing daily, but is what it is. daily, is what it is. Everybody's civil anymore, I know you're shocked. So I think it's a valid consideration.
Thank you, appreciate that. The next issue, so back in 2020, an aquatic preserve was created to include the Nature Coast. We are technically part, Pasco County is technically part of the Nature Coast, which is Citrus, Hernando, and Pasco Counties. But what seemed well-intended, this was an issue that was being pushed by Citrus County and a little bit of Hernando County, to help protect some of their waterways in the Gulf could have a negative impact on us. We didn't really have the ability to be at the table and part of that discussion. One commissioner who worked that really hard, and I'm going to let him explain a little bit more, is Commissioner Mariano.
So when this bill was going through?
Missoula. Representative Missoula, and when Representative Mariano was up there, they had a very good relationship. When this bill came forward, she talked with him, I had like three conversations with him. And what it is, is for example, like say, single code Leisure Beach, they've got one section where from marker 1213, we could do a connection that would get them up to the Hudson Channel. Real easy, real simple. And we warned him that if you do this bill, you're going to make it hard for us to go apply for a permit and get that done. Again, he wouldn't do it. We got some other issues too, we're trying to like make some connections, it could work. And, you know, had they even just put the line outside of a certain area, that'd have been okay. I think it's hard to like start a bill that way, because if you try to start it that way, then you've got to get specifics. If we just say, take us out of it, let us relook at it, let us get these things done, so be it. But literally, there's a few compromised positions that we could work with, that we could get to the end effect, but if we could start with the bill this way, let us get it over, just take us out of it, because we didn't ask to be in it. And for someone from Lake County, not even on the water, to loop us in with these two counties without any further, without any advanced notification, I thought was terrible. And when the vote was like, total vote was like 146 to 1, Representative Mariano stood her ground to say, it was a bad bill for us. But I literally, I couldn't get traction because he was pretty prominent, pretty influential to the power groups that were up there, that he kept it intact. And it sounded great for everybody. Oh, why wouldn't we want to be in aquatic preserve? But the restrictions that go in there, and give an example, Leisure Beach Channel, when it goes out, it's a narrow channel number one, when it goes out at low tide, it stops to a foot. And it doesn't go as far as Hudson Channel. If I can connect on Hudson Channel, I don't have to worry about doing the further dredging of Leisure Beach Channel, I just make them connect out. It's better for everybody, it's better for the environment, because the amount of prop scares go out there, actually, this bill is actually creating more prop scares because people get stuck in low tide situations, they can't get out, paying expenses, et cetera, it's just not safe.
I'm pretty sure as well that, you know, we're working on a big dredge project for the coast of Pasco, and this affects the dredge for Gulf Harbors, because we can't do a little piece of it on the channel that, where we need to, because now it's in this aquatic preserve. So we're like five feet in and it messes up the dredge. So we didn't have enough time to really analyze what the boater impacts were to Pasco County, and it's just too much for us. We can't dredge our channels.
I always thought Pasco was part of Sun Coast and not Nature Coast.
Yeah, Ohio.
But all counties.
Arapika North, they can add Arapika in.
They had us in for years ago, without the Sports Coast.
Yes. But yeah, so if we could just get that line looked at, that would be very helpful.
And I'd be happy to meet with anyone along the groups to go, and I would happily do that if you have people that you think are in the right position to talk to, I'm happy to say it, I think it's, is a good concept to try to do it, but the way they implemented it, and I asked for just even the certain areas to go, put it in a way where it's like further out, but they didn't want to hear any of it, and he just kept it.
Senator Goley is the one senator that covers all of Citrus, Hernando, and northern Pasco. I believe he would have interest in that as a general bill or not.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, as far as like working with water quality, what we try to do is make it as clean as we can. I had pushed the plot two money in the Gulf Consortium, work with Regional Planning Council, which includes Citrus and Hernando, to actually go out there and put like baffle boxes, like you heard Randy find, talked about the baffle boxes over in Indian River, because of bad water quality. Because the Tampa Bay Estuary just takes care of Tampa Bay Estuary, we had to partner with the Estuary and Regional Planning Council to put it together. We got eight and a half million dollars right now to go fix water quality going out there. So we're fully, you know, focused on water quality, but this bill right here keeps us from making it better for our citizens.
Because we don't remember what the chair said, I remember the bill, but I don't remember the back of the sign, I have to go read that.
But that's something that Representative Baker, he's in the voting world, anybody who knows that, he would be a good one to help.
Since he's not here, I'm going to go with all of them.
You get to tell him.
You may see him, I may not, but that may be something for him to look at, but I can't remember, there was something about that bill that I don't remember.
I know that past, we were really doing a lot of stuff in and around Crystal River and Kings Bay, that was a lot of Senator President Simpson's priorities. Still could be.
We're just trying to fix these voting channels, that's all, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing too, I could, Madam Chair.
Yep.
You know, I work very closely with the people up in Citrus as far as learning the project. When I found out what their project was at Regional Planning Council, I hadn't come here to present to us, to show us what they were doing. So I'm fully supportive of what they're doing up there, at the same time, I just want to make sure we do what's right for us down here.
Exactly. You get treated differently in scalping season, we don't need to be treated differently. You want to be treated differently in this.
You know, we have one whole neighborhood called Bailey's Bluff, who Army Corps is denying the ability to do a maintenance dredge. And so at low tide, they cannot get out. And we had the money from the Restore Act, and we've been turned down because they, something about the seagrass.
And just think, after the, coming off of two hurricanes with Hurricane Helene, a lot of, as you know, in Pinellas County, a lot of more sand is now in those, you know, boating ways and in our canals in the communities. As you saw, the sand got up to the roads up there, so, you know, it's a challenge now. We're going to have to do some maintenance dredge to help with the stormwater and the runoff that we deal with for future storms, to try to get that sediment out of there.
And just touch a little bit more if I could, Madam Chair. So in talking to that, that's a great point. One of the things that Kings Bay, the great thing they did, they took all the muck that was stuck in there and get out. They had an eel grass open, which is compatible down here as well. And what it actually does is improve water quality tremendously by taking the muck out. If they restrict us from all these canals that we're going to be coming up, and we've got a major project coming up and down the coast, and we have many meetings on board to come, funding already in place to go forward with it, but this here would improve water quality tremendously if we can do the same things they did up there, and that's what we're going to try to do.
I need to say thank you again to the legislature, and it was during Representative Sprouse, at the end of his term, we were able to get a sprinkle that allowed us to go into Gulf Harbors and line all the pipes there that were leaking, and they were, we had salt water coming in and really affecting the Newport Ritchie wastewater treatment plant. So we got about $2, $3 million from the legislature, and we lined every pipe in Gulf Harbors, and the water quality improved dramatically. And it also greatly helped the Newport Ritchie plant that we share, so that was a great project, so thank you very much.
Very hopeful that after January 20th, the core engineers will come to the legislature.
Yes, let's hope. Okay, Ralph?
So our last policy issue, you're always favored in the legislature, public records We spent years, last year we finally got it passed, getting a public records exemption for our county attorneys, our municipal attorneys, assistant county attorneys, assistant municipality attorneys. This is a safety issue. These individuals in our misdemeanor probation deal with the public on a daily basis, get threats, yell at, and the public has the ability to go on and see where they live. Is it necessary to see where your misdemeanor probation officer lives when they're just doing their job? So this is another one that, it has to be a standalone bill, it cannot be an amendment. I know the big discussion that was had last year when we took up public records exemption is, does the legislature need to look at it and just say, why do we even have the ability for employees, for the public to see where employees live? Why is that necessary to have that? So there was a lot of discussion during the session of just saying, let's just blanket it all, because every year you all come back and someone else has, you know, been threatened in their line of work, and they need to get a public records exemption. It's one of those bills where you cannot tack it on to an existing bill with public records exemption, they have to be by law a standalone bill. So we are seeking that this year for our misdemeanor probation officers.
So it appears that the state has exempted juvenile probation officers and state correctional probation officers, but not the county misdemeanor probation officers.
Look up and cover you and your assistant county attorney.
As of last year.
As of last year, yeah.
But you know, when we were dealing with, you know, as much as, again, we deal with this, when we were dealing with staff, you know what their number one question was? How many attorneys got killed? When do we, do we have to have that kind of a protection of a bill, a public records exemption, and quantitative by how many people were killed, all that kind of thing? Again, it's one of those things where I think when you all have your discussions on public records exemption, why is it necessary for the public to know where our governmental employees live? And I know you also, in the discussion, say, well, why can't we get our legislators in there too? That's a different discussion, but you know that. It does become a problem. I think County Commissioner, or Chairman Starkey, she had an incident where, she had a resident came into her yard and took pictures of her holding a gun. So again, it's a safety issue, and hopefully we can get that addressed either this session or moving forward, or you all can just do away with public records, you know, not require any, where the public needs to know, and we can just say, that's not available to the public.
Commissioner Mariano and I had to have the bomb squad come out, and Secretary Gwynn, when that crazy guy, that engineer went and tried to kill him at the DOT offices, and he had a bomb in his car, we had to have our residents check for bombs.
Now we're going to go on into our funding initiative proposals. We told you how we looked at it, especially after the storms, what can we do with storm recovery? But now we look to you, what can we move forward? It's not saying we want all eight, that would be nice, but we know in reality, that's not going to happen. We know the Speaker of the House has said we need to be tighter with our purse strings. We understand that, and, but we've come up with projects that are going to help your constituents, and hopefully, you know, we can move forward with these and we can get you all to sponsor these moving forward. And again, if you'll just let us go through, if you have any questions, we'll have staff here to talk about those. The first one I want to address is our Public Safety Operations Center, our PSC. What this one is, is our, we'd like to build a more advanced centrally-located PSC. Currently, we're right here, is where our Emergency Operations Management Office is located. It's 50, it's up there in years, one of the oldest in the state of Florida, also in the flood zone. So early on, we said, this was always going to be a big ticket item, we need to work on this, we've talked about this every year. We're a large county, let's move this in to a central location. We already have the land over in Land Lakes next to our jail and behind our utilities facility. But what we would do is create a facility which would house our Emergency Operations Center, our Emergency Management, our 911, our Fire Rescue Administration, Traffic Operations, one central location to have that. We are seeking design costs right now, we're still in the early phases and move forward with the design. We have a match on that. Currently, the design is $20 million. We received money from the feds, $3 million, which we were great for last year, and so we're seeking $4 million so we can complete the design and then move forward. Know that this is a long-going project, you know, this would be one where we'd come back and say, now we need to start talking about the construction cost. This is funds we'll also seek, again, from the federal government to help with those, offset those costs, but that is our goal.
If I could just add to that, there is a typo, I think, in your area there. Local funds expended to date right now are about one and a half million. This is just on the design portion, as Ralph says, this is a marathon. We know it's a very expensive ask overall, you know, we will continue to work with the federal government, our federal delegation as well on this. But I think Kevin Guthrie put it pretty clearly, that we have one of the oldest DOCs in the state, and for the operations, and you know, we're finding places, I can't even bed people down in our areas when we have to ride out storms. And I think, as I mentioned in the beginning, we didn't think it would have survived in Milton in its current state, and we actually contemplated moving out east, which would have meant moving our 911 center, which would have meant moving our EOC operations and those things. So it's a very important facility that we have here on this campus, but we think consolidating our public safety operations in a singular point, whether that's Land Lakes, somewhere in this county, we're still, we know that we have a lot of work to do, but getting the design done gets you that much closer to shovel-ready, which is really what our objective here is on this. And so it's pretty important to us, we want to push forward on it, as I mentioned before, this is the new normal, and so I think getting there.
What is different from this and what the sheriff's building at the place? In his trainings?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question, Senator.
I think you toured the sheriff's facility at their...
They go down, what's the difference between dolls?
What's the difference between what you're looking to do and what he's already...
You're going different, what sheriff does, now with his EOC.
So the sheriff has got his operation, so kind of look at it this way, the Emergency Operations Center runs the entire, the entire county. Every tactical organization has their own separate command centers, right? My fire guys operate, my utilities guys operate, Duke Energy operates, they're tactical, they're tactical centers. So that's more of his tactical center to operate his complete operations. He still maintains a residency in our EOC, so our EOC coordinates with his EOC. And so that's kind of how the command structure works. We don't get into the tactics of day-to-day, I'm going to stage this, 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 and this here. So that's his, well, I'll call this a different term for the military, but that's sort of his area that he would function there. We are offering, and we'll have the discussion on whether or not he wants to consolidate his operations there, that would be his choice, of course, if he wants to do that, but we also wish to consolidate other key county functions there, traffic operations, we would put 911 communications there, our fire rescue, et cetera. So similar to what you see down in Pinellas County with their coordinated system in Hillsborough County, I know many of you have toured that.
Have you toured the Pinellas County EOC?
I need to.
Yeah, so have you seen ours?
I've seen yours, I haven't seen yours, I've toured the sheriff's.
Please go across the street, right over there.
The blizzard, we don't care what it looks like, we need to get rid of it.
It's not, it's, gosh.
And I think we can only withstand like a category three, right?
Three to four, it just depends, we'll start losing some cladding, but...
So...
We couldn't have all the...
The local matches one and a half, not 31 and...
Yeah, that's a, that's what we've spent to date, we've committed to date, but we will continue as we advance design.
My friends in the house have a 50% match that pretty aren't claddied.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And to say, we're looking at the best alternatives as well. I mean, we just had the sheriff move over to a new building, another building here, the old jail's there, right across from where the EOC is right now. And again, cat three, cat four. One of the other problems that we had in there is, we didn't have enough room for electrical companies to be in there. Sometimes you're trying to like have a meeting within the meeting, lots of things are going on, presentations, and the way that building's set up is so difficult to go from spot to spot. If they set up a giant room around, kind of like in just... If they set up a giant room around, kind of like, and just had surrounding rooms, it might be a lot easier. But again, we've got to get it to cat five, just to be safe because you don't want to move. I actually like it on this side better just because you're closer to the action. If we build it high enough, which we can, it's more the secure walls that we need, staff's going to be looking off between this here, we have a knotting facility as well as on the lakes. We're going to look at the best way we can go do it, but we do need to get the study going.
And if I could add, and I know the House, Representative Maggard has their rule, don't, don't forget too, we're stacking, we've got federal money we're bringing to the table on this as well, so I think there's some unique opportunities for us to really leverage those dollars.
So who's filing this?
It's an appropriations request. This is, we wanted to talk about this before we move forward. We don't even know if this is one you all would even entertain moving forward.
I'd like you to.
You'll be, yeah, they'll be working on that. But, but again, at the end of the day, you know, we knew that we couldn't get all eight. We got to figure out what you all feel is something that we should move forward with. That's what we were hoping you all gave us that input on.
Last, the last session, we got the sheriff, half of his need for his project as a training center. And I think the entire delegation sort of committed that the second half of that could be a priority this session. So I believe that's still to be, if we want to make sure that he completes his piece that he needs.
I would, I was shocked when I went to see Hillsborough County's Emergency Operations Center and compared it to ours. I just, we're 30 years behind maybe? I don't know. If you, if, and I, I heard the Pinellas one is better and more, and newer than the Hillsborough one, and Hillsborough's already expanding theirs. So every, every player is at the, at the table with their screen, with their vest that says who they represent. So organized and we just, we don't have space for everybody that we need in ours. And, and then they're feeding the responders, so they have those commercial kitchens and they're rolling out meals because they're all spending the night there. We, we have to bring in ours, I don't even know how they, how everyone eats in our EOC. I think our, our fire chief wanted to say so. Go ahead, Commissioner Oakley. I know Commissioner Oakley toured both of them.
Well, I, I toured both of them. I wish he should have been at St. Pete to see that one because it was amazing how large it was and how well it could take care of all the different divisions and parts of EOC. They built out ahead, so they have several years ahead of them to fill that space out that they got. Then we went to Hillsborough and we found out that they were busting at seams because they only built to what they needed at the time. So within a short, I think it's been five years, I believe, they're already breaking out walls and expanding theirs in Hillsborough. St. Pete would be a long time forward, you know, moving into theirs and getting, they will grow into it, but it'll take a while. But they had all the facilities for bedding people down, showers, restrooms, everything that you need, plus all the accommodations of rooms set off from the main room for the different departments, for Sheriff, Fire, different departments and department. So it's very, very important and we, we're busting at seams. There's no room for a lot of people. Duke wasn't even present because there's not much room there. They were one of the electric companies that we needed to be in contact with closely. All they had was a number you could call. But it's.
There's our fire chief who wants to say.
So actually, I'm bringing up our fire chief, Gwynn, to talk about the two next asks that we are looking for. And I'll turn it over to him and.
Hello, everybody. Ryan Gwynn, Pasco County Fire Chief. Our next ask is for Nastella High Water Rescue Vehicle. If you pay attention to the screens here, we're going to try to get a couple of pictures up so you can see what we're specifically asking about. Just to recap, like Mr. Cabala said, we had about 1,200 water rescues between Debbie, Helene, and Milton. About 638 of those we were able to handle ourselves, roughly 50%. Without the, the high water vehicles coming in from the state and other agencies for our assistance, we wouldn't have been able to get to the other percentages. One of the things that we noticed right away with all the vehicles that we had coming in was accessibility. So a high water vehicle is wonderful. Getting in and out of it is extremely difficult. So the particular vehicle we're asking for has a gate on the back, which is actually wheelchair accessible, will be able to lift patients in and out of as well. We will be able to reach a high percentage of the individuals that we weren't able to get to that we had to wait for state resources. It is also a dual purpose. It's a six wheeler, it's a actually six wheel drive extended vehicle. We'll be able to use this vehicle to not only get individuals out of flood zones, but we have a lot of wilderness areas. We have some search and rescues that go on in the Green Swamp area, the Starkey area. We'll be able to be, to be able to bring searchers and rescue crews into those individuals to find those individuals as well. So currently, you know, we, we don't have a high, we do have one high water rescue vehicle. It's well past its life cycle. We, it was 20 years old when we acquired it for free from the Army 15 years ago, and it is well beyond use.
Any, any questions on that one?
And our next one is Fire Station Four, which is located in the Starkey area off of 54. We are asking for a $7 million match to finish building that fire station. We currently have not identified funding for it. That service area was identified back in 2016 as being needed. Currently, we've run to date over a thousand calls in that area, of which 89% of them have over a 12 minute response time. So we're in a bit of a desperate need for that.
Chief, are we still considered one of the busiest ambulatory services in the state?
Third busiest in the United States, sir.
Again, your local match may, in the House, maybe.
So.
I mean, if it's an $11 million project, the House would not even consider it unless you had a 50% combination match, a local match.
So the $7 million is for, that's a 50% match. So we are prepared to match, the county's prepared for the other $7 million.
That needs to be reflected.
I didn't say.
Yeah.
It says four million, actually more than that in the total projects.
We just got recent construction costs for the newest fire station. It was 15 million, so 14 million is.
Okay, so, so these numbers are updated.
Right. Everything we're moving forward in public safety, we talk for the counties, we're, we're prepared to do a 50-50 match.
I still remember mobile homes and two person engines.
Former, former fire.
We're, we're, we're. Senator, you know, we're in a mobile home now.
You're in a mobile home now? What do you mean?
Station 19 flooded out, so we are in temporary housing there behind the fire station.
Seven Springs Station is going to eventually open.
Eventually, yes.
For the last eight years, we've been doing a lot toward fire stations.
So you, you have.
Senator.
Yeah.
So let me ask this, Senator. If we're going to go and ask you for seven for out of a $14 million project, does the state have any heartburn here? Let's say we get the $7 million from you and we move on to the feds and we get $7 million from them.
They don't care what, Randy could speak for the House. I don't think they care where the match comes from, as long as it's at least 50%. It could be a combination of. While we're talking about, Ralph, if I may, I know that in work session for both chambers, first committee week, last year we had 4,000 local funding requests. If you're in the Senate, that's 100% totally over $3 billion in local funding asked. That number is going to be, I can assure you significantly lower this year. How much I don't know, but I'll use me, for instance, last year I probably had 50 requests. We have six funding silos. Can't take money from healthcare and put it in education advice.
We have silos too.
So just as a reality check, this may be the year that me and Representative Maggard and everybody else may be asked to please identify your top three or four at each site. Don't send me 20. So.
I can pay you back on that. I can pretty well tell you that's how the House is, our speaker made it clear to us, he's cutting $4 billion out of our budget in the next two years. So something's not going to get funded. So we're going to have to, on the House side, and we're still figuring out why, you know, there's a lot of, we have a lot of things going on. Three storms sort of averted all of our attention, right? So when I see stormwater projects and things like that, I think those may be a little bit more powerful to the state to try and solve flooding issue as cost issue relates back to our insurance rates. They have talked many times about if it's a landlord issue, landlord project, it probably will not be looked favorably this coming year. So we're still trying to figure out what that means. Does that mean sidewalks? I don't think that, that's above my pay grade there. But I do know he's cutting back and he, if I didn't understand it, it's my fault. We are going to be focusing on cutting because our cost of the budget running up compared to the increase in the people who are way out of land. And the county, the state's decided that's stopping. So if we're dropping $4 billion, the number came from, I wouldn't ask. But they have said it in every board meeting, every meeting I was just there Friday and going Wednesday, they've said it over and over and over. Appropriations will not be there like they have been over the last six years. They're not. So be prepared for that. So I'm finding out that's.
And part of that's, you know, with COVID money and post-COVID money came flowing down from Washington. We had money we didn't have to spend. Now, I, I still believe that we're going to create a pot of money that will be labeled somewhat like disaster relief, a silo that for communities like all up and down the west coast of Florida that need that infrastructure help to get back on their feet, that may be a funding source that we never had before. And some of that money may come out of our $14 million reserves, as it should. It may be a combination of general revenue and, and reserves. But Representative Maggard's right, I think both presiding officers have preached this message since before the election that post-COVID money is not there anymore and member projects will feel the pain of that probably more than any other part of the process.
I asked the chief to come up just to mention how many fire stations we have opened up. You know, we, we did a, a bond referendum for fire and we built, how many fire stations?
Six right now. We're currently going to open up two more.
Yeah, so we're trying to keep up with the growth, but we, we're, we're just, we're not there.
We're station 20. They reopened, nice station.
And we are scaling back. I mean, I, I think if you look at 17, it's absolutely beautiful, but maybe, maybe there's some cost cutting we can do on the future ones so we can stretch our dollars even more. So just wanted to make sure.
Trust me, you've got people that in the fire service that want to come work for Pasco County all of a sudden.
Decept.
Many of the initiatives, and some of them actually are included in the fire station. So the cancer initiatives that we've included in the fire station is a big selling point to a lot of individuals, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Which one are we on now?
So next one is number four. And let me just stop and say, again, this is why we wanted to do this workshop, to get this feedback, so the commissioners and, and the organization can understand what we should move forward with, what is realistic, knowing that, you know, we weren't going to get all these, but we want to, you know, figure out what can be doable. So the next one is an issue that we had a discussion with our legislators on, and that is, again, we are such a large county and when it comes time for disaster, where do we house those when we have to do evacuations? Senator Fasana was able to get in a regional shelter when he was in office over here on the west side, but we don't have any shelter that is set up on the east side. We have to work with our schools and, and that is in law, when, that we work with our schools that we, we use their, their facilities. But the legislator said, why don't we have a dedicated regional facility for that on the east side that is built to hurricane standards, but can also do double duty, do other things so it doesn't sit empty? The regional shelter in west side, through the year, it's operated by the Department of Health. So on this one, I brought up our parks project because this is one is a unique project that we also sat down with our municipality, Dade City, to talk about because they had a need as well.
Good morning, Keith Wiley. I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources. Commissioner Oakley, I would be remiss if I probably took the floor. I know this project is something that you're very familiar with. Do you want me to give a quick recap or do you would like to do that? All right, so at the same time that we know we needed a shelter on the east side of the county, the city of Dade City and Pasco County was also looking at community centers and recreation complexes that are tied to their master plans. So when we all got together, we said, okay, well, the master plan for the parks plan calls for 25, 30,000 square foot facility. The improvements in the city of Dade City for their community center was around 10,000. And then we know that the shelter need is around 40,000 square feet. So we got together, we all basically did a planning exercise and we said effectively it makes the most sense to combine forces and budgets and figure out how we can, you know, put this facility in one location, which would, which would be in the city of Dade City limits and have it multifunctional. And, and I think that's pretty much where we are as of right now in terms of the concept. In terms of budget, the county has $20 million, well, will have $20 million through the new impact fees that were approved last year, and we're requesting $20 million to do the remaining for the construction.
And I'll just add too, that a lot of this started when I sat down with Commissioner Woodard of Dade City. They're looking for athletics and recreation for inside Dade City, and Dade City's a rural community. So the fact of it is, I've heard in the past several times from Randy Maggard and also Danny Burgess, they were looking for a facility that'd house people during storms and things of that nature, but also a meeting place for, when we have meetings outside of a regular courtroom, as we, like we go out to Starkey Ranch, to the library there and have those meetings. We could have this facility also facilitate that. And it's, everybody seems to be on board pretty much with, with the issue. The fact of it, it's, it's more than just east side of Pasco County because it's a regional facility. It's a facility that not, not only can help people on the west side of Pasco, but also in the region for Pinellas County or Hillsborough County, will have a place that they can move off that coast. And we just went through three terrible storms for our area that not many people even talk about. Debbie, but Debbie flooded Zephyr Hills. They had 12 and a half inches in a very short period of time. It flooded Zephyr Hills before anything really happened over on the coast. And then, of course, when Helene came and then Milton, I mean, it's over 30 inches. People think it's all the development we had that caused it. So I said, we have more power now, hey? So developing property, but none of that development caused that. That was just too much rain in a short period of time and caused a lot of flooding and all. But we need that facility because we don't have that on the east side. We're very rural on the east side. We're also rural community, looking at federal funds also. I've got Congressman Villaracas, he's out looking for funding for, and, and grants that we can use for us too, to help with this project. So everybody seems to be okay with it and, and I think it looks good for me because of the fact we're a rural community. So I think that shows up very well.
Commissioner Waiton.
Thank you. Yeah, good, Lee, Keith, Commissioner Oakley. Important to note for this project is this land is already off the tax rolls. So if it were to be funded, it's not going to be a lost revenue source for the city of Dade City. And also during the storms, what we learned is a lot of the folks from East Pasco, if they were displaced from their home from the riverine flooding, they were having to commute all the way to Wesley Chapel District Park or the Fasana Shelter, which nobody's going to travel 25, 35, 40 miles away from their home when they're trying to just put any piece of their lives back.
And you have very few hotels up in that area.
Back together. So I think the distance, Wesley Chapel District Park was obviously a lot closer than the team did a great job, Keith. And if you're going to be displaced, that's a great facility to be displaced too. But it, the distance, I think deterred people from wanting to leave their homes because it was so far away from where they were. So it was a good substitute. The distance, I just think deterred people from either leaving during the storm or feeling confident enough to leave their home behind and then them trying to figure out how to get a bus back wherever, back up to wherever they were going to. So the Chair's, or Commissioner Oakley's project, I think is a good project for folks.
Well, the project, I left out a part of actually. And most people on the east side, if there's a bad storm coming in on the west side, they're not going to move to Fasana. They're not going to move into where the problem's going to be.
And we kind of, that's our special needs settlement.
Oh, yeah. And it's, the fact of it is, I've got one major part. On this property we own is also our VA office, one of our three VA offices. And the VA does a great job in Pasco County. The fact of it is, 10,000 square foot of this property is planned to be for that VA office. That VA office was built in the 50s and it needs improving, but we have great people there that do a great job for our county and our veterans. That's a part of this also. So even though that Bill Racus is fully aware of these things and he fights for VA every time he gets a chance.
A question I had on this was which silo, or can it be divided up into multiple silos? Would you consider the funding?
I was thinking the same thing, trying to figure out where this would come out. It would probably come out under, maybe, Ted Probst under emergency management.
That's what I'm looking at. I mean, when we looked at this, here's a great example, right? Especially from the House side, this is a project we've been talking about several years.
Yeah.
And been looking where to put it, what, because we saw the need where there is cold weather, people who would need, you know, these three storms taught us a lot of things and it made Senator Burgess in my mind that something on the east side needs to happen, right? When Commissioner Oakley come up and said, hey, I got a piece of property and I got something we can do together, that's what we were looking for to make it work out, but we need it for the storms and things of that nature. But a great example here is 20 million, right? So if I put in 20 million on the House side, that may be all I get. So to me, to rate this as number four higher on my list, number four is probably number one in my list, right? So when we go forward and they're cutting the budgets, I'm going to fight for number four, is what I'm going to fight for, is I see the biggest thing in my community and our community. So gives you a little bit of idea of what we're going to be facing going into the budget.
And it's big number.
Now, I, could it all change?
Yeah.
There's a lot of things to change. But we're going in, the House is, like the Chair said, okay, what's your number one? I may give you number two, what is it? And mine going into this will be this, and that's how I'm looking at it going forward. And that's where it routes, and number four is my number one, it's really easy for me to make a decision. But if money opens up, then we need to rate them.
Yeah.
Where do we need to go so I know where we need to push what's the best? And it's going to be what happens out of these storms or, like you said, where they won't take the money out of, and that tells us what policy we can give them to.
I think we're lucky that your budget chairman is our neighbor in Hillsborough County, Representative Plour, good guy, good common sense guy. Obviously Tampa Bay is home, so he and I work well together and I, you know, we're going to do the best we can. We're sick and tired of some of our southeast counties in this state getting all, all the grease.
Yeah.
We don't want to be treated extraordinarily, we just want to be treated equally. Kind of going to be the goal for me going forward is, is make sure everybody gets treated perfectly.
This project pulls everybody together because it is rural and it will help not only Pasco, it'll help Hillsborough and Pinellas.
I think it will help Fasana a lot.
So it's Fasana.
Because it's just us not, the state trying to pull the whole weight of the elected senate center. We have several people involved to try to make this come through. So I thought we're going to fight for it.
I always worry that this is a project that the executive branch.
Yeah.
Sometimes that vote seems to be, that should be a project of the local governments and we deal with that every session. I mean, he only got me for 50 million last year.
We feel those very much in Pasco County. Happens to us all the time.
There's a lot of play here in a lot of states. That's why we're going to pick her out in the next two.
We're working.
Well, we hired three lobbying firms to help protect the vetoes.
Anybody any good?
Well, they're a bit questionable.
Besides those two?
This is our number one job, protect the veto.
And again, we appreciate this feedback. We did not anticipate that, you know, all these would be, you know, seeking sponsors, but we want to feel what is doable, you know, and we again appreciate talking about the local match, the different silos, knowing that there might be something for emergency and recovery coming off those hurricanes. We always know water is another priority. We have an issue dealing with that. So the next one, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, Representative Maggert, I think you really touched a good note as far as your passions going to be for this project. And part of this meeting was all about finding what your passions were. We've got a list a mile long, but we need to find out which ones you think are best and go. All right, so that's the beauty of this whole thing. But I will tell you, we do feel that, you know, it's not just part of the county, we're one county. When Tropical Storm Debbie came years ago and flooded out Little Road, that connection to 54, everybody in Pinellas County was stuck, nowhere to go.
Well, I'm going to bring that up here in a second.
That drove us to go to make it an elevated hurricane route, to make it safer and better. And that road was a tremendous benefit for transportation as well as going forward. But we looked at that as a regional thing, and I think this is a regional thing as well. With all the storms that hit Dade City and Zephyr Hills over the summer before Debbie even got here, Hurricane Debbie, they were in trouble all the way through. And then when the storms hit, it's like, what do you do next? And we're going to work on some big infrastructure things, but I think this shelter out there is very much needed because, like you say, you're not going to drive 30, 40 miles unless you really had to. If you're stuck on an island you couldn't get into, maybe you're going to just go do it. But this facility could help anywhere around the central part of the state as well with those storms tend to go that we've seen many times. So I do think it's a very big regional thing and I think it's very applicable. I do want to make sure when we build it though, we build it so unlike the hurricane shelter we built in Fasana.
If I'd been on board, I would have given you those inches.
I know you could have. Literally, if we went up like another 18 inches or two feet, we could have made that where it could have been an indoor volleyball place, all sorts of other indoor sports could have been done.
Could have made money during the year.
Instead of just sitting there.
Yeah.
Now, we do have premium healthcare, which helps that area for poor folks to come right there, it was great, so tie in with the VA. The benefits of this are just complex, so you may be, you'll hit like four or five pots of money with this. We're still going to go federally too to try to get more money as well, but whatever you can do with it, I think this is something that is a great project.
I think it's the number one of the burgers too.
This facility, Mr. Mayor, was, it's going to be designed where we can have basketball and a Olympic swim pool in this facility and our meeting rooms and things where we can have extra meetings. But it'll have that activity, it's right next to a elementary school and a junior high school, and it's not too far from the high school. So there's a multi-use building and the VA would be in this building also. It just connects everybody together in this one facility.
Can you get real quick, an aquatic facility there much in the east side?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I said.
Number five.
Lot of love, lot of love. The next one that we'd like to discuss is our emergency portable generators for wastewater, storm recovery and resilience. Again, coming off of the storms, what occurred in our county.
Hi, everyone. Jeff Brockman. I'm the Director of Utilities Operations and Maintenance. A little history is we have 845 lift stations throughout the county. During Hurricane Helene, we had 280 of those lift stations that were affected and we had to bring back online. During Hurricane Milton, we had 440. The difference between the two hurricanes, Hurricane Helene was mostly our west communities. Hurricane Milton, it was countywide. We have 10, or excuse me, 13 generators that we currently own and we're seeking an addition, a funding for additional 25 portable generators. This is drastically going to help us make sure that we get the county back online. We took those 13 generators that we owned and we also received 10 from the state, but we had to shuffle those resources throughout the county. So as we brought lift stations down, we had to take that portable generator, move it to another lift station, do the same thing, and that was a 24/7 effort for quite a period of time. And receiving these additional generators would be helping the operation moving forward.
I experienced that problem in two neighborhoods, in Gulf Harbors and Aristida, where the generate, the lift stations went down and everything came up in the street. It was just gushing out of the street.
Our number two is your number one, is that what you're saying?
And you were there in front of Commissioner, or John Gallagher's house, it was coming up and out and actually the generator in front of the Gulf Harbor Civic Association Building, right across the street, the lift station went out and they just had remodeled the community building and everything came up through the toilets and the showers and ruined the brand new building. So, but, and you had to take the generators away from the pumps that were draining the lake out there and then the water got into the houses, but they were needed in other places. So we, this is, this is a real big hurricane storm prevention.
Absolutely. And to add to that, ma'am, you know, these are resources that we can share with other departments.
Yeah.
And these are also resources that our other municipalities reach out for assistance that we can provide assistance to them as well.
You guys just running around, bringing those to the different lift stations just to get some capacity, it was a lot of work.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is such an environmentally sensitive thing as well.
Yes.
When that wastewater topples over, I can't tell you the calls I've got from everybody across by it.
Yeah.
Over and over again.
Yeah.
At their best, they can't keep up with what's here.
Representative Burfield's house had the same problem in Pinellas, it all came up.
Yeah.
Now, we got a turn to do a short-term fix with them?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
No, I just, I know personally she had the same problem with the lift station going out and the sewage coming up in Silverlands had it for us.
It's insults on injury.
Every city and every state organization is blocked to be, does, everyone has. So we have a generator pump issue, I guess, that maybe we need to look at different.
Every loss of power.
Okay. The next two are pertaining to our infrastructure and I'm going to have Nick come back up, our county engineer, to talk about these two projects.
Yep. Good morning again. I think first off, let me just say upfront, I hear you on the 50% match, so we can revise the application materials to reflect that we will provide a 50% match for both of these appropriations requests. First one is Curly Road and Wells Road sidewalks. We have some gaps that prohibit safe access to the three schools that are located on Wells Road and we are intending to construct the sidewalks needed to provide that safe network. We're hoping the state would be willing to participate in some of those costs. Second one is Trinity Boulevard and that's really the gateway between Pinellas and Pasco County for southwestern Pasco County residents as well as northern Pinellas residents. We are identifying the need to provide bike lanes on the corridor, which exist on the Pinellas side of the county line, but not on the Pasco side. And that would get us up to Little Road. We want to increase the capacity of the Little Road intersection by adding east and westbound second through lanes. So that would relieve any congestion that's experienced by motorists today at the Little Road intersection. And then we also have a desire to install fiber optic cable and traffic cameras at all the signalized intersections on Trinity Boulevard from Little Road to State Road 54. And that allows for the operational efficiencies needed to make those signals function at their highest level.
We're hoping that this works in concert with the efforts that you have going in Pinellas County. I think you're, you know what's happening in that area.
Yeah, I'm working with county, Pinellas, especially on East Lake Road. There's currently three lane up to Tartan Woods Boulevard, basically, a bridge over down and in, the three lane that road each direction because some of us in the morning from 6:30 to 9:00 can sit through seven signals.
Seven signals.
Seven signals at Trinity and East Lake. And then down to Keystone Road is another five to seven cycles. So the county is working on costing out, and that's a county road, so the state may not help them do that. They know the need to three lane that road with what they have developed, allowed to be developed on that corridor. And that would get us up to at least the Pasco County line. Then the burden falls on you, but there's a need in the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour that those streets are overloaded beyond any potential capacity whatsoever.
Yeah.
So I agree that that may be one that might have Senator Hooper's name on the
So this is our companion to yours.
And maybe some guy named Jaeger.
I know that I get calls about that intersection, the Trinity and East Lake, and it's in Pinellas County. And until you moved here, no one really felt the pain much because it's the northernmost light in Pinellas County, right?
It is, and at least Pinellas County repaved their portion of Trinity to the county line, no pressure.
I'm sure it's on our plan, especially now that we pass, have some money with our.
And I know that we, I think we all anticipate that the redevelopment project at Mitchell and Little Road is going to be significant in terms of traffic and infrastructure and I'm sure they'll get to share in the cost to help with those improvements, but that's going to be a project.
Yeah. We had the money to widen Trinity in our TIF funding, but a number of years ago, we realigned our TIF transportation infrastructure funding. We changed it and pulled a little bit out, it goes to the Parks Department to help with their costs and I don't remember where else it went. And they thought that tax incremental finance.
Tenants, tax incremental finance against TIF.
And we thought that we would be able to keep up with the cost of widening roads and building roads, but the cost of roads went up so much that the Trinity Boulevard funding fell out of our five-year plan.
What happens today is, is as people go eastbound on Trinity, they get to Robert Trent Jones slash Little, and there's one straight lane and one right turn lane only and two left turn lanes. And all those people in the inside lane, until they see that sign just before the signal, now they're cutting people off trying to get into the go-through lane. So even a slight extension of that beyond Little Road would alleviate a lot of near disasters and some disasters of people trying to get the right line, the correct lane.
Great, okay, good information for our county engineer.
And in fact, this project will alleviate that exact concern.
We also have state funding from, is it state or federal, for the bikes, the orange belt trail is coming along Trinity Boulevard. Where's that funding coming from?
That's state funding. That's state funding through the Sun Trail program.
It's the Sun Trail funding.
Yep.
And so we do have that coming on the, I believe it's the south side of Trinity Boulevard. It'll go all the way up and connect to the existing trail at the, your Publix there at Community Drive. And then parts of it are already built that goes all the way to Rangeland and that'll eventually come up here with Lakucha State Trail. That is the continuation of the Pinellas County Trail. It's the old Orange Belt railroad line and that construction should be starting soon. So I don't know if you might go back to your Pinellas County folks and make sure they have, they have, they do have the right of way, they can continue that to East Lake. That would be good, then we can connect that stretch to the Pinellas County Trail over there at where it comes to East Lake and Tarpon. And I do believe that more and more people are going to use those trails to get to work on those electric bikes and scooters and we see it more and more in the county that people use alternative methods to travel around.
Do you allow the motorized, is that considered motorized vehicle, the electric bikes?
They have to be pedal assist. There are state rules, but you can go on those. And you have to stay at a certain speed. Commissioner Waiton?
Yes, thank you. So number- So, number six, it's a sidewalk request, but please don't take the request, it's trivial. We've had with, with your, with your help and Rep. Steel's help and Rep. Magger and Burgess, we've been, the last two years.
Chipping away.
We've been chipping away. We've received funding and made it through and we've officially funded the, both segments with the partnership of the state for the first phase and the second phase to the county this last budget cycle, Pineview Middle and Elementary. And that, how we're coming with these lists is based on the most dangerous schools in Pasco County. So we're working closely with our school board of where the need is to get kids and families to and from school since busing has ended, the courtesy busing within the two-mile radius because they just don't have drivers. And this location, number six, is number two on that list. And we've, we've made it, last year we made it to the governor's list, unfortunately he vetoed it, but we've, we've been able to capture funding at least almost all the way across the finish line two years in a row. And families and folks out in the world are incredibly appreciative over the sidewalk funding. We know it's, it's, it's a lot of money, but not a lot of money. But when folks see these coming, they see their tax dollars that work for them and are just incredibly grateful. So I know it's not a big-ticket item when you look at it on here, but the impact for folks is incredible.
This is a project probably comes out of the road, the transportation budget silo and education. That's okay, I don't care where it comes from.
Can I just add that too? We have to keep in mind that these kids are walking to school when it's dark. So, I agree, it's a, it's a concern.
Let just, thank you, everybody in the state for the last two years of your help with this. It's, it's been a good run so far and hopefully we can keep them over.
Chipping away. I want to go back to number seven on the, oh, go ahead, Representative.
I want to ask a question to Mr. Goldstein. I know you're sitting there going, "Good God, what's happening?" I remember back in our VOPH and Metro days, this sidewalk's uncurly. Isn't the responsibility of one of those developers to create, to widen curly to four-lanes to do that anyway? When it was, I don't know if it was Craig and Water, it's a Water Graph.
So it depends on what part of Curly you're talking about. You're talking about the northern.
Supposed to take it there to 54. Because I know the part of it was Metro, then VOPH had a little bit of it, then we hit about overpass south. Then that was supposed to be expanded by the developers over to 54. So, I didn't know where that was related to the sidewalks because if they're going to take it from two to four, you don't want to redo the sidewalks out of the way.
So, whoever, whichever developer or the county that's responsible would be required to put in sidewalks with the new construction. There is a piece south of overpass that was already done as two lanes by Craig Weber's group. There is a missing piece that there's no developer that controls it, I think through the, there's a family that still owns that property, that eventually the county would have to do that. So I'm not sure, there's no, there's no VOPH developer on the hook for the portion south, for any additional portion south of overpass.
Okay, so the nut property that was sold on that side of it, are they going to, are they expanding and widening that down to where you did say?
Well, they have not come in for development yet on that piece, but if they do, yes, we would likely require that they, they would be part of VOPH and they would likely get VOPH credits for doing that. So, yes, if that ever comes in for development, we would require them to build that road for credits.
Trying to think, I know there was some traffic count click-off when Metro built and as they kept building, it clicked off more roads had to be put in. I remember that, I mean, that's been a while.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I had those conversations, I didn't know where we were at in that process. If we're getting ready to do that, I mean, I don't want to delay the project, but we don't want to go to four-lanes and have to redo it anymore if that's where we're getting ready.
You are correct that Connected City had an obligation to fund some off-site roads. One of those is the road that goes into the VOPH Super Park. That's a priority. But Curly Road South is also on that list as well, so there is potentially some future funds that will come out of Connected City for that road. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just didn't know where that was getting ready to trigger because there's a lot of, a lot of houses, a lot of traffic, a lot of public moving up and down that. So I didn't know when that part was going to trigger, so I was trying to figure out the dates.
And to supplement what David just said, your memory is remarkable. We are, we are constructing.
Second part of our lives then, forever.
Well, thank you both for paving the way, literally, for the requests that we're making today. This segment of sidewalk would be on the west side of Curly from 54 up to Wells to service the existing residents. And then when development comes in on the east side, which is the area that I think you're referring to, they would be obligated to at least consider the expansion of the road to four-lanes and the construction of a multi-use pathway on the east side of the road. So nothing that we're asking for today would be throwaway. It would be useful construction in the interim period until we can get a better ultimate facility constructed for that corridor.
I remember the master road plan at that time was there was a number triggered and then they were, whoever, I can't remember where, from the credits, four-lane was going to go all the way to 54 anyway.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't staying two-lane.
Right.
Even talking, we'd have to go to six-lane at one, at one point of all this, because you think of all those homes coming in and all the development at the time. I just wanted to know where the trigger point was because there's a lot of traffic on that road.
Understood.
I didn't know if it was getting close enough for that trigger number. And I remember that part, but I maybe moved apart and wrote out the rest of that. We talked about a lot of roads at that time.
And Randy, one, one side has a multi-use path and one side has a sidewalk.
In this location, the west side would have the sidewalk, the east side would be the multi-use path.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I, I need to go back to Trinity Road for a second, Trinity Boulevard, I'm sorry. And this is kind of for, more for next year, something we talked briefly about at the county. If you saw during the hurricane, Little Road went underwater. And Little Road is part of the CIS system and is part of the evacuation route for Pinellas County. But I have the video here. It literally had a river going across it and we had to shut it down. If you notice, in, in the community that you live in, Heritage Springs, the, the ponds are always at high full capacity. They never get drawn down.
Yes, they do in the summers.
Well, no, barely, barely, that are along Trinity Boulevard. And, and then we had a lot of residents, again, who, you know, get flooded in Thousand Oaks and that, there's a whole nother story of why that happens. But I feel we need to be looking at solutions to draw down that, those ponds better ahead of a storm, ahead of the big storms and stop Little Road going underwater. And that's going to take some engineering work. The Army Corps came here a number of years ago and looked at doing a big study with Swift Mud. Randy may remember this, when he was on the Swift Mud Board and Commissioner Oakley and Commissioner Waitman, that they looked at holding back the Anco River and providing storage on the east part of Starkey Wilderness Preserve on the 4,000 acres that the state bought to mitigate for the Sun Coast Parkway. Because that has different rules on it than the 8,000 acres that are on the Starkey Wilderness Park. You cannot change those, those are very strict environmental rules on it from my family. The Army Corps said the cost of holding back that river in large rain events was too great for the benefit. And, and so they nixed that, that program. So we're kind of left hanging with no solution right now for the Trinity area and flooding. There were discussions about putting conveyance, I don't speak his language, putting, letting water go under Trinity Boulevard out. So I think we have to go back and revisit some kind of solution for, for the Trinity. And it could be just getting Swift Mud to let us open those gates earlier, but we do need an engineering look at getting water capacity out of Trinity and big rain events. So that'll be, hopefully, something we'll bring to you next year.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So it's a little bit more, but part of the, the water's supposed to flow like Corcoran Creek.
Oh, yeah, Pinellas County water comes north into Thousand Oaks and Trinity.
So that may be part of it, but the other part is, and we've done some best management practices with Swift Mud, with the Army Corps, taking some of the water out, like the old CVS store back above and changing the.
I'll give you a tour sometime.
Leasing it early. But the whole thing is going to be the conveyance.
Yes.
When everything was dry way back when, all these trees started growing, all the vegetation was in, now the wetlands are full, if we can get the water to be conveyed, it'll work. And if you, if you take a look at all the flood that goes on that area, when it goes past that CVS, it goes into Oak Ridge. Oak Ridge never floods.
Never.
The water flows because they got drainage already in, conveys the water out. The place to the past that was of the reserve, that was like really a choke point. Swift Mud went in, did a great job opening them up, and now they flow and it goes into the Anco.
Anco.
So if the back end gets conveyance and flows, then we should be able to get conveyance on the other end. And that's going to take, I think with it, January 20th from here on in, we may be in better shape to make it work, but I think the conveyance, and that's what the developers did from years ago, and the improvements we made show that, but I think that will be the key.
Yeah, so, that's just going to take a little work. But I think, I think there's a not-too-expensive solution that we can get to get more water out. So we've got to keep Little Road from getting shut during the hurricane.
I think you also got to put it in perspective, I have done many of these type meetings, that we got to be realistic. What happened to us doesn't happen every year, right? So we can't overreact because we were 14 inches above rainfall, then Debbie, Elena, we don't know what the 1 in 500, 1 in 200, whatever that is. That was, I guess, not the bad pun, but the perfect storm that hit our area.
Yeah.
And we also need to look back at, we have 60, the whole state was hit. And 67 counties had the same question, same problems that Pasco counties have about, wow, what are we going to do with all this water? And there comes to a point you can't do nothing. You only can put so much in a full cup. So, we have to mitigate as much as we can, but there's nothing, I don't think, we could have built that protected us from what happened.
Yeah, that.
We couldn't big, big enough canals, we couldn't have run the bypass canal, wait through the middle state dump and then. So I think we got to look at some of this stuff logically. 301 flooded. I've grown up on 301, it's never flooded.
But Little Road.
98 flooded. There's a bunch, well, my point is, there's a bunch of major highways for a bunch of major people that flooded. That Whitlock Cucci went a mile out of his face, a mile. That covered highways. So, I mean, I think we got to put this in perspective, when we want to try to solve a problem, well, how long do we want to solve it? Is it for 1 in 100, which is what we're designed to do? Or do we want to start doing 1 in 500? We don't have the money. There's no way.
Right. And I agree with you 100%. And that's why an Army Corps rightfully said, "It's cheaper to buy out some of those houses that repeatedly flood." There might be five or six, you know, in 30, 8,000 Oaks. And, and, you know, we buy them, elevate, help them elevate or whatever, but it, this isn't the first time that Little Road's been shut for what?
I think we use Mitchell Park as a retention area.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not the worst solution, it's better than road flooding.
Well, we use, in Tampa area, we use Morse Bridge, we'll shut it down. We got 16,000 acres of state, we flood it.
But Little Road is, it floods too often.
Which you got to do. You got to move water somewhere when you can't, when the canals and the rivers are backed up and you can't.
We have a place to move it to, we have a place to move it to, but regulatory issues are keeping us from moving it out that we need to work on.
This is a good way into our last project that we wanted to talk to you about, a stormwater project, Seapines. We're going to have our Public Works Director come up and, and talk about that and then we'll do a little follow-up with you all.
Good morning, everybody. Jason Mickle, Public Works Director. Like Keith did, we have Commissioner Mariano, if you would like to say a few words about this, absolutely, I would turn it over to you. But if you'd like, I could just open up with a minute or so.
Let me jump in a little bit because before you were here, we had a lot of things that were going. I mean, literally, in my whole terms from 20 years back when working on this project, Representative Mariano and Simpson first worked on this project trying to get all the homes out of the flood zone. And that's what they've done. So it talks about like 32 homes, but there's actually 800 homes involved. We've gone through, we've bought waters that actually go into the Gulf that can now directly take it out. We've got right-of-ways going through that we bought, gone through the process, worked with the HOA over the past like three years to go through the whole process to line up this major project that's going to take all those homes. And they start out like a five-foot elevation at one point, it goes down to three foot before it gets out to the Gulf. It's very slow-moving, but everything we've got in here, we've already bought the right-of-ways, we've already made contracts with the HOAs. This $22 million project is sitting with the Army Corps right now to get the final part through. So we're kind of like, the 404 permits sold us up, but literally for $5 million more, we can take a major project and get this thing all the way done and save, let's say it's 800 homes there, but there's even another 200 or 300 homes around it that are all going to benefit from it. So that overview, guys.
Oh, no, thank you, Christopher. So we talk a lot about resiliency. You hear that word, kind of, kind of a buzzword. But this truly is a resiliency project. We have, we have an opportunity to help a community, a Pasco County community, become more resilient. And the way we would do that is, this is a pre-permitting community, so they don't have a ton of infrastructure there. It's not, it looks like we're putting up some recent, are those all recent pictures from storm? Yeah, so this, this doesn't take this type of storm, or the storm season that we had to make this community flood. They do flood in, in much smaller events, cumulative stormwater events like our typical thunderstorms throughout the summer. But I, what I would say, just for a couple of numbers, we do have about 32 homes and about 2,000 feet of road that we will take out of the floodplain by doing these projects. The reason why it's, it seems like such a large project is because it is three projects in one. Each one of them has its own phasing. So you have Seapines, main project on kind of the south and the west side, you have the Lafitte Drive project on the north side, then you have kind of the local project for a lot more of the smaller homes on the east side. All those together is about a $22 million project. I would say we have about $3.5 million in Swift Mud district dollars that they've committed to us as long as we have a local match. Just for a couple of numbers, we got about 13.5 million in our money, in Pasco County money, about 3.5 in Swift Mud money, and the rest is what we're asking for, the $5 million shortfall. We have communicated with Swift Mud, as long as we have a match, their match is good. They're not going to take any of that from us by getting a state allocation. So, just in summary, we had about 32 homes we could take out of the floodplain, we have about 2,000 feet of, of local roads that we would also take out. We're requesting $5 million and we really consider this to be a, a resiliency project for, for the county.
Geez.
If I could ask, are those be eminent domain or are they all willing participants?
Everyone we've got through was all willing. We didn't do any, and it's maybe just kind of went to them, we met with the Civic Association, had a forum right here with everybody. The HOAs are kind of were battling with us at first because they have like a key piece of property that they were going to end up giving to us, we ended up buying it from them, but that whole connection. But the whole community came out, supported it, wanted to see it through. And literally, it says 32, that's just a floodplain, it affects the 800 homes as the water flows out. So the HOA's done, and literally we bought, we bought probably, I want to say, six different large parcels that we had to buy. The last one that was hang, that hung us up, why this wasn't done in one project from the get-go, was we had a doctor that had a piece of property that connected Old Dixie, a developer was coming down below, the doctor finally sold to us. So now we could take the property from Lafitte, as you mentioned, where it just backs up all these homes and take it right into Old Dixie, right down Gulfway, right down to Gulfway and then connecting right over to a, to a canal that's right there that is really just two lots we, we bought as well. Instead of running down this narrow little walkway, that little culvert that then has to go out to another canal down to the south, now we can go there, treat the water so it's a clean project, treats the water well so the water goes into the Gulf cleaner and better, all the way down.
Can I just add as well, Colleen just reminded me, two of these phases, the two big phases are already designed. So we're close to shovel-ready. The, the hurdle is what you, you've already talked about, is the 404 permitting. On Seapines, we still have a 404 permit process that we're in, and in the Lafitte phase, we're hopeful that we can either move forward without it or get through that quicker. So, we'll see how the permit process goes. We have a pre-app meeting with the Army Corps that we are working on to try to move this along as quickly as possible. It did slow us down a little, but we are working through it.
Literally, we were ready to go until they stopped us down. But I think, as you say, with what's going to happen during the 20th, I'd expect to have the permit right June 27th.
You'll be able to be shovel-ready in a year for us?
Yeah, if we could get through the.
You had to permit.
Yeah, a year or less, a year or less.
I would assume the Senator or one of them may know, but let me know on your 404 come out.
Okay, absolutely.
You can fix it all with the coochie? No.
Take any help I can get.
But from a, from a, from a state perspective, this is the type of project, I'm hearing, don't know that for a fact, and I think the chairman looked at it, this is a project for $5 million of 800 homes. I can't think what else could be better for our 14 billion that we have that we have to use, five for 800. I think we can go pitch that over and above, you know, my priorities, number four, right? This is a project I think the state's going to be looking at coming into this going forward. I can see that, I can get vetoed, killed just as easy as anything else. But I can see this as a, you have so many people involved, this to me is a practical project.
I predict we'll have between water projects and natural resources, environmental, we'll have three times more projects in that silo than any other site.
So, have we, have we done a good job of targeting those enough, do you think? I mean, we, we had a lot longer list and, and we pared it down, but did we, do you have any suggestions for us? And, you know, I would ask the representatives and their, their folks that are here, what are their number one priorities and can, and maybe some of the ones that we don't have on here. We want to be smart. Maybe we can align better with some of our other projects that align with some of our representatives.
Madam Chair, if I could, I want to just touch on this project a little bit further before we break away from it.
I think you have support.
So, no, I know, but something else, something else that come up in mind that I want to touch on.
Don't mark yourself out.
No, 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 no.
Turn some of the cells for you, come in and go. That's like you did. That's it. Light it up.
No, no, we'll get, we'll get, well, we actually went to work to rewrite it. We're going to work to rewrite it a little bit better. Because one of the things that's going to benefit this, what we haven't been able to do is accept it as a sewer project.
We haven't done one conversion and it's-
We've done a submittal for that. David Down's working on that already with another, another set of projects. So, that's going on forward. And what that'll also enable me to do is we much wanted to pave these roads too, but we didn't want to do that with these roads always going underwater. During tropical storm Debbie many years ago, when that storm came in, I think it was, I think that was a storm, it damaged so many roads with the trucks driving over it. The part of the settlement from FEMA was they actually lightly paved some of the roads in there, but the rest of them are in terrible shape. So, this is really going to help elevate the community and effectively take, separate sewer projects with a coastal project really help out the area for the water quality.
You actually used BP money to fix those roads. Lightly paved for Debbie. We actually had BP money that we used for it. FEMA didn't help us at all with those roads.
How much county's reserve ponds will you use after the two major hurricanes?
Um, speaking offhand, I think my budget director's in here as well, but I, I know that we are estimating, Andy, we're estimating a total cost right now, what, roughly about 50 million with, with the last storm. So, we've, we have been paying for that either out of general fund, solid waste reserves, wherever it's appropriate, so.
And how big is the reserve?
Reserve funding right now on the general fund, probably 80 million.
But there's, are those unrestricted? We park money in the reserve fund for large projects. So, is that including those larger projects or, you know?
So, no, I mean, those would be our, those would be our reserves, what we have set. We earmark them, you know, in, in a spreadsheet off when we, we look at projects. So, I mean, those are the numbers. I mean, and we project what those numbers are going to be, and we have a number of operational expenses because we, we do a five to 10-year outlook of how those numbers are going to get spent down. And they do, they actually do go down.
Simple question, I think Representative Offs is wanting, how much money do we have in reserves, that's truly reserved, that's unrestricted?
Yeah, right.
20 million, 15 million, what's not included? That's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say that probably, I can't give you an exact number, we can, we can get back to that, but I will tell you, we target to have 60 days of operations set aside for what you just saw happen a couple of months ago. The rest of that is, is a planned expenditure usually for something.
Right, and all these projects are really important. So, I was just wondering if they aren't fully funded or don't get funding at all, are we going to look into tapping some of the reserves?
We would, we would have to make hard decisions, hard budgeting decisions like we do every year.
So, don't you have, is there a statute where you're required to make a certain level of reserves?
I don't know if it's a statutory, it's more of what we would call good practice in the, in the governmental accounting world, which is a minimum of 16.7, 67%. And that's a minimum.
If we can take it down all the way to nothing.
It's not a bad idea.
That would be bad, correct.
Yeah, I was just going to say it's a bad idea.
That would have bit us, that would have come back and bit us in October. I would have promised you that.
It would have bit everybody.
Yeah.
On the other hand, I'm going to say from the House side, we have the LA here. You know, I have two projects in my district. I know what number one's mine is pretty easy, right? I would get with them and I would rank them. I mean, I think what they're asking is, if I only going to get one, what am I getting? What, what do you, what do I got to go fight for? And I think I would do that. I mean, I pretty well know mine, it's pretty simple. But we also look at it. I mean, we'll be, well, I'm sure we'll have the same discussion at the delegation meeting, right? Where we'll be able to talk them on all of us to be able to discuss some of these. But I would get, I was counting, I would get with each of the members that all these numbers in, go talk to them and say, hey, this is what I got to have. Right? If money opens up, whatever the world does, I don't know, this is paragons. And that's my suggestion out of it. So, you've heard from what my side of it is, we're going to find out more as we get into it. We're going to start committee week, I think the 8th, something like that in January, then everything's just going to, so we're going to know a lot more about it, right? But he's already told us, and I think the chair said it, he's going to be a part of it, we're cut. So, that's my suggestion on my side.
We appreciate that.
Just to close, just thank you both for being here, ladies in the Senate and the House. And if we don't capture any funding, at least from my perspective, if we're able to, to check off a number of these policy glitch bill items, they're just as important because there's, you know, monetary ties to, to these decisions. And so, anything we can do is a win in my book. And grateful for any help that we can, we can get along the way. So, looking forward for, to a good session and appreciate you all's support and have to support where we can.
I think the good news is you're one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. And the bad news is you're one of the fastest. In fact, comes with a lot of, a lot of things that pop up quicker than you anticipated.
Absolutely.
So, from the legis, from the legislative delegation side, this, this was really a good meeting. This was an opportunity. We would never have this opportunity to sit as a group and talk about priorities and policy issues. Otherwise, we can't do it at a delegation meeting. That's more for the citizens to express their. Thank you all for coordinating this. Ralph, thank you for emceeing it and allowing us to sit down as a group and just openly chat. This, this is what a workshop ought to be.
Wonderful.
Thank you all very much.
Yep, we are very grateful to everyone. And please get back to us if you have more questions or if you need more information. We're going to fix the numbers on the ones that aren't matching up right and get them back out to you.
And I think we heard, you know, prioritize, you know, don't, don't ask for the world, but go back in and prioritize, make sure you have those matches, make sure, you know, that it, it cannot be funded out of the reserve or, or other, other pots of money. But again, that's why we, we set this up so we could get that kind of feedback as we move forward. And we, we again appreciate you all both being here and, and the staff.
And please, for some of you that have not been through legislative budgeting process, don't panic when the first budget comes out of your $5 million item, send it to 250,000. Don't panic. It's way too early to panic. Those numbers changed dramatically from week three to week seven. First budget's going to come out week three of session.
Well, that's, that's good advice.
A lot of people in there look like, well, this doesn't help me at all. Just forget about it.
Well, I guess the question is, when they start panicking, probably when you need to panicking.
I was just going to ask them if they want to say anything.
Just ask them, are y'all panicking yet?
I think that's, that's a scary thing that a lot of people try to react to.
Great advice. When you have a thousand percent chance, those last year, probably less than two, I did. Mike, you need a mic.
Learn the words, sprinkle this is-
Mike Moore, Southern Group. Yeah, it happened many times last year. And I'm sure Sean can attest to this as well, where I had projects with some of our clients that came in at 2:50, came in at 5:00, and eventually it got up to 2, 2 and 1/2 million dollars, you know? So, yeah, don't panic. If, if it's in there as a placeholder, you're good.
I just want to applaud for them that they're not magicians. It's just going to be, you know, you guys can't make, you know, things appear. It is going to be a different type of year, so.
I do think it's important for us to hear from our other representatives that aren't here today, what their priorities are and where their priorities, where they feel we are on this list and make sure we're in unison on, on what we're asking for. And if we need to pivot, we want to be as successful as we can, obviously, for constituents, for your constituents too.
We will.
And make it, get past the governor's pen. So, we, we actually spend a lot of time and do a lot of work on coming up with our, our lists. And we appreciate working with you guys to help bring, bring home some, some positive results for, for our citizens. We want, we want you to be successful too.
So do we.
Yeah.